No, it didn't. It just, it downloads on a second. It does.
I keep trying to get four dots.
All of the schools.
I love the pets at school. I don't think that, I think it was like right when it started.
Oh, really?
At first, it was one month and then going when I first got on the council. Maybe two.
The house is right there for everybody.
Before that, all the council members would get binders delivered to their houses.
Oh, really?
We're live and offline at the same time. We're like sure to ask. Live and, and what's the girls know? Today, we've opened the box. The meeting's name is. This is it, not this one. An invitation to you. And I got, I got this one. Right. Appreciate everyone's patience. We're gonna get our meeting, uh, the council meeting October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen started. If we could open up with roll call, Wendy with you, please?
Wendy Henley.
Gavin Massengill.
Amy Patillo.
Sarah.
Charlie Zek.
Amber Lewis.
Mike Dyson.
And... Because we've got an amazing crowd, we've already got a little bit of a wait. I'm gonna call it, uh, item eight. Official swearing in of Jason Brady as police chief of the city of Rollingwood. I, Jason Brady.
I, Jason Brady.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of police chief.
Duties of police chief.
For the city of Rollingwood.
For the city of Rollingwood.
The state of Texas.
The state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitution and the laws.
The constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I invite, uh, Mrs. Brady, uh, if you wouldn't mind.
You got a vest on, chief?
I need one. Like airborne penny. I don't want this meeting to get unnecessarily long.
He indulged me at a couple of words, please.
Yes, please, thank you. So, uh, I just wanted, in the two weeks I've already been serving in this capacity, I just wanted to reiterate what I think the members in the council of Rollingwood already know. You have an incredible police department. As you know, they were going through some staffing shortages. They stepped up the plate. I don't think the citizens noticed any lapse in service. Felt any less secure. They've been, you know, coming in on the days off, covering shifts for each other, working overtime. So, uh, I mean, you really, I'm, I'm proud to lead these men and women. And, uh, it's just a privilege. And I'm honored that I was selected. I'm humbled. And I wouldn't, of course, I couldn't, uh, get out here without thanking my wife for supporting me. And of course, through the miracle of modern technology, all my friends and family from Florida to Corpus to Canada that are watching right now. So, I didn't wanna take any more of your time. I just appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Chief, I can assure you on behalf of, uh, our entire community, we're, we're excited to have you. This is a great department. It's great to be to my next point, and then the point that Chief Brady mentioned. We did have some shortages there for a little while. And, uh, we had some, we had everybody step up, uh, and serve in, in just an exemplary manner. But we would be remiss as a community not to recognize, uh, the efforts, uh, which were substantial, uh, and, and numerous and very, taking the all night to name them. Interim Chief, Pampa, uh, on behalf of our entire community, just wanted to, to say thank you. You really just, I mean, you delivered in a time that was not, could have been easy for anybody to step up and fill that role. You somehow made it seem easy. And so, thank you very much for that. Uh, I have no doubt that the officers recognize, um, what you were able to do for this department. And I can assure you that, that citizens certainly recognize it. If I could trouble you to come up here?
No worries.
We've got, I mean, that's a, that's a really nice piece of hardware for me.
Very much. And so, I mean, I would have to say that I am only did as great a job as I did because of who was standing beside me. Not who I was standing in front of, but who was beside me and working hard as they did. Sorry, I'm a little emotional. So, but I appreciate everybody's hard work. I mean, it has not been easy, but y'all stepped up. This is not my award, but ours. So, I appreciate it.
It's, it's coming. It's a ceremony. On its way.
Thank you.
But if you notice, her, her eye control.
I don't care.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. We don't have anyone signed up for public comments on the off chance that there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. We will move on from public comments and immediately into, uh, public hearing to amend the city's code of ordinances regarding the number of members of the board of adjustment to hear each case. Amber, would you be so kind as to give me a little bit of context?
Sure. Um, we realized that, uh, our current code didn't match state statute. It required five members of the board of adjustment to hear every case. State statute, um, requires four. And so, uh, we are amending the ordinance to match state statute, which will help, um, the board meet more regularly and have quorum.
Oh, sorry. Note that, uh, Buck Shapiro has joined the dais at, uh, seven twelve? Yes, sir. Thank you. Look, Buck. Sorry.
So, a simple housekeeping thing that will help the board meet more regularly.
Public hearing is open, but we don't have anybody signed up to speak. Anybody wish to speak on the item? Okay, we will close the public hearing at seven fifteen. Sorry, there's a glare right on it. I'll call it, public hearing three, our agenda item three, discussion of possible action on a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission to amend the city's code of ordinances regarding the number of members of the board of adjustment to hear each case. Counsel? Discussion? Action?
I move to amend the city's code of ordinances regarding the number of members of the board of adjustment to hear each case as detailed in the attached ordinance. Second?
Move a motion for one in a second from, uh, Amy. Do we have any discussion, counsel? No discussion. Call vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Public, I'll open a public hearing at seven sixteen. Public hearing to amend the codes, the city's code of ordinances to expressly include allowing for veterinarian services without the inclusion of, without the inclusion of overnight kenneling in the current C-one zoning district of the city of Rollingwood. We have Joshua Brunsmann here to speak. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, uh, he'll speak from the podium and, uh, you just give the name. Thank you.
Evening, council members. My name is Joshua Brunsmann. Uh, I work with PAS Veterinary, uh, in regards to site location or selection. And that's why we're here this evening. Uh, we're very excited to, uh, be here in front of you tonight, making this request, uh, on behalf of, uh, PAS Veterinary. We wanna be in Rollingwood. We are, um, one of the better veterinarian clinics, the leading one in Austin, uh, city of Austin. That's our preferred vendor for all their employees, as well as we work, um, with, uh, Austin Pets' Life, as well as one of their vendors, uh, in hand in hand. But we're also just very excited to be able to come into a community like Rollingwood and, um, bring, you know, kind of the, our brand over here, or I should say, my, our brand, I'm not part of that, but, uh, PAS's brand over to Rollingwood. Uh, we're very excited. We have a little bit of a slide that I'd like to share with you. It just kinda gives you an idea of who we are and... We're not just a veterinarian company. Our vision, uh, PAS breaks the mold of the stuffy and personal veterinarian care. We dream big, love everyone, and have fun at work. Love the communities we serve, and we proudly care for the animals and humans of all breeds and backgrounds. PAS strives to exceed expectations and sweep clients off their feet with superb customer service and tailored veterinarian care. Our focus is on being the place of comfort for our clients in pets and sickness and in health. Pieces in our name and our hearts. PAS, and peace to all. Our facilities, um, are, are top notch. We have a couple of locations. South Lamar, uh, was the first one. That was a ground up build, uh, complement over on Caesar Chavez as well, a repurpose of a old industrial warehouse. New location just opened up a couple of weeks ago on North Burnett. All these locations are top notch. PAS offers a little bit of definite, a little bit more holistic approach to caring for their, uh, pets. Very big on employees. That's the reason why they teamed up with the city of Austin as a preferred vendor to, uh, offer the services, um, to them at a small discount to accommodate everyone's, you know, family, friends. Not only working with the city of Austin, they are sponsors in their local Little League, um, over in Zilger, um, and a couple of other neighborhoods in town as well. And they have a very, very strong following, uh, within the city of Austin. So, we definitely want to, uh, complement the city of Rollingwood with their own veterinarian services, and, uh, that's why we're here this evening. Pop up the, uh, the website. Just get a feel of kinda... Maybe I don't have the website. Yeah, so this is one of the locations that we have, uh, over on South First. Yeah, I think the mouse is not working for me tonight. There we go.
Don't worry, it doesn't work for anybody.
I'll feel better. This is kinda the theme, you know? Nice bright bold colors. Every neighborhood's a little bit different, so in regards to sitting in Rollingwood, we definitely accommodate properly in regards to the expectations of what you would like to see off your corridor. Won't trouble you to show you the website, um, but we are excited to be able to come here, and we hope that, um, you know, here tonight, we can go ahead, and after tonight, we can jump into your neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joshua. Joshua's the only one, uh, signed up to speak, uh, for this public hearing item. Is there anyone else that, uh, would like to say any words? Okay, in that case, I will close the public hearing at seven twenty-one. And call of item five, discussion of possible action on a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission to amend the city's code of ordinances to expressly include allowing for veterinary service, services without the inclusion of overnight kenneling in the current C-one zoning district of the city of Rollingwood. So, just to be clear there, counsel, it was planning and zoning's, uh, recommendation to include this, uh, the, uh, I guess, the addition of veterinary services, uh, with the expressed exception of overnight kenneling. And my understanding is, not my understanding, it is available to you in your packet, um, in ordinance drafted by, uh, legal counsel.
Move to adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash ten, dash, dash sixteen, dash zero five.
I second. We're motion from Gavin, a second from Buck. Do we have any discussion, counsel?
I have discussion. Although I like the concept, um, I think it will be a neat addition to the neighborhood and to the commercial district. Uh, I did attend the planning and zoning meeting and heard the discussion going on, uh, on this topic. And, um, I think that the location that they're planning to have this development is a great location. It backs up to a creek. There's a lot of buffer between neighbors. It seems like it will work really well there. There was some discussion on offering a special use permit that runs with that property, as opposed to changing the zoning for the entire C-one zoning to allow, um, these services anywhere in C-one. And my concern is that we do have areas in our C-one district that don't have buffers between neighbors the same way, um, that this does. And so, I just wanted to understand more about how a special use permit works. If it would delay people from being able to do what they want, or if we could pretty easily issue that and then not change the entire zoning for the, the entire business district. So, I wanted to get more information about that.
Charlie, I'm gonna defer to you on that.
Currently, the city, the, uh, your code of ordinance does, does not authorize veterinary services, um, by special use permit. So, um, you would have to go through the process of amending your code to authorize veterinary services through a special use permit, which would require giving the notice, um, putting the notice in the paper, giving the written notice out to the public, going through the public hearing process at the planning and zoning commission, getting a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission, and then coming back to, and then coming to city council for approval of that change to your zoning code. And then, once that is done, then they could apply for a special use permit, and they would have, then have to go through the planning and zoning process, um, all, as well. You would issue notice to the public, put notice in the pu, in the newspaper, and then they would go to the planning and zoning commission, request the special use permit, go through the public hearing process, get a recommendation from city council. City council would make a recommendation to this governing body, who would then, um, act on the recommendation. So, I mean, I don't know what your timelines are for putting things in the paper, but it, certainly, I would guess it would be another ninety days to a hundred and twenty days before they would be entitled to their use.
I don't wanna unnecessarily delay, unnecessarily delay anything, um, but I, I myself am hesitant to change the zoning for the entire business district. When it's this specific property works well for it, but I don't know that all the business district would, so that's kind of where I stand on it.
Can we amend it, or can this ordinance be specific to this property?
No. No, it's a, um, this was a recommendation, this was a, a request to re, for a rezoning as a right in all C-one districts. And that's how it's presented to the public, and that's how it's published, and that's the only thing that you can do.
If we approve this ordinance as is, can we go back and change it?
Of course.
After the fact?
Yes.
Which would then go back through the special use permit process?
You would have to create the special use permit process first.
Yeah.
If you were to approve this tonight and then repeal it, um, after they receive their permit for construction, they would have rights under chapter two forty-five and could construct their, their use under, under...
They'd be grandfathered.
Yeah, they'd be grandfathered.
I just don't want all of that.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty tightly drafted even to apply to all the properties. But, I mean, I think I recall the conversation in planning and zoning that, with the exception of a little area outside where they could walk the dogs, I mean, they're not gonna be outside pans or that sort of thing.
They will have to take them out and let them go potty and have an, and they clean it up promptly, and I, I don't think it will be an issue.
They could take them all to the dog park. We love dogs up there.
We could. I just, I think the specific property works well for that use, um, because I know the property, I know what it backs up to. I know the creek, I know, but just, I think the property's a great property for it. I just don't, I know other properties that aren't. And once we allow this in our zoning code, then anyone can open up a business along our business district with this, whether or not it's an appropriate location. And that's where I feel like it might not be.
They talked through all of the concerns for having a veterinary clinic there, and in addition to saying no overnight kenneling, it also limits it to not having any daytime, like, doggy daycare stuff either. So, I think they were pretty good at covering all of the potential, um, difficult operations that could cause problems to the neighbors.
I'm keeping my second, just in case you were wondering.
Yeah. No, well, I was, although, allowing discussion to continue.
No, yeah, I don't, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, so there's, there's a motion, there's a motion on the table.
That is the end of my discussion. I just wanted to, to...
In a second. So, um, if there's additional discussion, counsel? Hearing not all, call vote on the motion then? All in favor? Sorry. Thank you. I was like, wow, you guys are really thinking on this one.
We serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, four to one. Welcome to the community. I have no doubt that you guys are gonna be great neighbors. Hopefully, you'll find us to be great neighbors as well. Be good.
Absolutely.
Please, yeah.
I'm still gonna take my dog there. Just to be clear.
I do appreciate that.
We are friends.
I, I, I sincerely hope to, well, I sincerely suspect from, uh, the sheer economic perspective, we won't be a hotbed of veterinary clinics. I think the market might be saturated. That said...
Just to re, uh, let you guys know who I am. My name is Troy Buckland. I'm the executive director at PAS Veterinary. And this is part of the crew here at, at PAS Veterinary. And this was so significant for us, we all wanted to kinda show up tonight and thank you for pulling this through and changing your zoning code to help us, uh, bring our business into your neighborhood and, um, offer the services that we love to offer the most. If you have a chance, please check out the website, get a bigger feel for it. But, um, and also, um, just really sincerely appreciate all your effort and time that you put into this. And, um, we look forward to being up in your neighborhood.
Do you have a retail component?
We do have a small retail component. It mostly consists of, uh, if we have a, um, over the counter pet food that we will sell, that'll be a tax product. We do, um, t-shirts, hats. Sorry if I was supposed to take it off, but he, he got away with it, so I left it on.
That's 'cause I came from Little League baseball, so...
There you go. I just came from work, so... But we, you know, mostly, mostly swag items that, that are for branding purposes, things that our clients really love to have. And, uh, but...
Make sure you register with the comp trailer in the city of Rollingwood.
Well, I've already got that ready to go.
Not in Austin.
All right. Definitely.
To that end, uh, we do have an economic, uh, development corporation. So, feel free to look, look us up. We will make sure that, to look you up as well. The Rollingwood Community Development Corporation. Welcome to our small community.
Thank you so much. Any support that we can get from the city of Rollingwood, you've already done so much so far. I'm waiting, I'm really anxious to see what you guys have to offer in the future, too. Thank you for bringing us on.
Welcome.
Okay?
Thanks for attending our meeting. We can't even get our citizens to do that.
Would you mind if we stepped out?
No, not at all. Your job's done. Thank you. I would wish this on anyone. That's not true. This is a fantastic opportunity.
Congratulations.
Tell you what, guys, we are gonna go ahead and get started on a presentation. Item six, presentation and status update of the infrastructure improvement plan by Kay Freeze and Associates. We have both. Perfect. Love it. Carolyn's doing it. Joe gets, Joe gets, gets to relax in the back row today. There we go. Thank you.
See what he meant about the mouse. Anyone know any tricks? Oh, here we go.
It's the rollerball stick?
Yeah, use the roller ball. Just click on it. Yeah. How fancy this board is.
Thank you, Ashley. Okay. Oh, great. All right. Thank you. The scroll? Oh, this'll be good. Thank you. I think the roller's working. All right. Thank you all. Thank you, council, mayor, for having us. My name is Caroline LaFollette, and Joe Cantalupo and I are here with Kay Freeze to provide an update on the infrastructure improvements plan. The project has about a twelve month schedule, and we kicked off in January of this year. So, as we're wrapping up, we want to provide an update and get your comments and questions. Provide an update on the projects that we've developed as part of our plan, and then we'll go a little deeper into our cost estimates, and then we'll talk about what remains for the rest of the project. So, when we were here back in July, when Joe was here, he gave an update about the first phase of our project, which included data collection. We went out in the field throughout the city. We did some hydraulic modeling with a two D model. We got a lot of public input through an online survey and a mail out that had good results, and we had a public meeting here in March. And the result of all of the public input, data... And the result of all of the public input, data collection, modeling was this list of areas of interest, which, as you can see in this table and the remainder here and on this map, which I know is small, that you have in your packets, these areas of interest were really throughout the city, they were distributed based on two watersheds, the north side that drains towards Town Lake, Lady Bird Lake, and the south side of the city that drains to Eames Creek. So as we came up with these areas of interest, the next step prior to developing our project concepts was to assign some sort of ranking to them because we didn't want the costs of the projects to dictate the ranking. And so there are a lot of different ways that we could have prioritized the projects, we could have done twenty different metrics, we decided to focus on the main concerns that flooding brings, which is dangerous flooding velocities and the depth of flooding at structures resulting in property damage. So given our twenty-three areas of interest, we analyzed a two hundred foot buffer zone around each one and analyzed the depths and velocities based on our preliminary hydraulic modeling of the one hundred year storm event. That ranking spat out a list of our projects, our areas of interest, and we made a few adjustments to that list in two ways. Um, in one way, we, where there were projects that were part of a system, we didn't want to end up doing an upstream project before a downstream project that would cause adverse impacts, so we reordered a few areas of interest so that downstream projects went first. And then the other way that we adjusted them was where two or more projects received the same score from the depths and velocities, we used our public input that we had received earlier in the year as a tiebreaker to assess the need at that location. I know this is impossible to see in this table, but this was our initial ranking and what I want you to get from this table is looking at the range of colors, each color represented a different drainage area, a different spot in the city of where the water ultimately ends up. And so as you can see, the city as a whole was pretty, it was a pretty good geographic distribution as we ran to the projects, so that ideally projects will occur throughout the city to serve residents. Next, we want to talk a little bit about our approach to developing those project concepts. One thing we really want to communicate tonight is that the projects that you see in your packets really are project concepts, they're not the results of any detailed modeling, detailed design. These are proposed solutions to mitigate the identified drainage issues and as we'll discuss in the remainder of the presentation, the sizing, the exact approach to each of these projects is likely to change when design occurs. These were proposed ideas to come up with an order of magnitude cost estimate to help with financial programming and give a head start to planning for the city. One of the reasons that these projects are preliminary idea is that we've been discussing the nature of right of way and easement data in the city and that a significant effort needs to be taken really to understand fully where all the drainage easements are so that we know what land is available for the city to store drainage in an overland way on. So because there are twenty-two projects in your packets, we're just gonna show three as examples of the types of projects we're proposing in this plan to give a sense of the magnitude and the variety and the costs. The first project that you can see here is a proposed storm drain system along Nixon and Gentry out here to take the drainage underground, help mitigate some of the flooding along these two roads that's impacting properties here. So there's a variety of the projects in the packet that are storm sewer projects. Next, we wanted to show as an example the Edgewater Low, Edgewood Low Water Crossing. Um, we know there's a retail study going on also that the city is doing in this area, so for the time being, knowing that we'll want the recommendation to be coordinated with that study, we're recommending replacing the low water crossing with a bridge in the flood plain, which would involve extensive FEMA, City of Austin watershed coordination, um, that could be a real improvement to the safety concerns at that location. Our third example is a less expensive improvement. Um, this flooding concern was along Vance and Riley, right there along Riley Road. Um, there is some ponding and flooding on properties and this is a lower cost solution to have a curb cut and some channel improvements in order to reduce the ponding on that road. So here's our summary table of cost estimates, and I want to point out a few things about this table. Starting at the top, it's hard to see here, but the first project is the B Caves Road Drainage Improvements. We started to look at B Caves Road and obviously it scored well on the depths and velocity issues because there's significant flooding there that I know causes the road to be closed and has caused a lot of damage. Because there's so much text doc coordination involved with that project to define what the goal is, what the project would be, we didn't want to put a cost associated with that project, but we did want to use this plan as a way to highlight the need for a project there, so you won't see a cost for that project. And then as you go down in the table, you'll see that several costs for projects are bundled together and that's where there's one system of storm sewer or channels that would solve multiple areas of interest and really couldn't be chopped up, so you'll see N K and V have one bundled cost, E and F, and so on. Finally, at the end of the table, you'll see the number of fifteen point four million, which is our preliminary cost estimate for the proposed projects, and then the remainder of the presentation will focus on what is and is not included in that number we want to be very clear about. If I can turn this slide, there we go. Our general approach to our cost estimates for the project is that we took our preliminary hydraulic model and we used it to size what we think would be likely improvements, storm drain, channels, and these concepts are likely to change, as I mentioned, as design occurs, partly because of easements not being known. So for example, if the city had a drainage easement in a location where the twenty-five year storm event sends water, they could decide that that's fine and the water can be there and maybe taking it underground in storm sewer is not necessary. Um, that's one change that could occur, also as the projects are de- designed in detail, the adverse impacts downstream will also be looked at, and so what we've tried to do with our project concepts and our assumptions at this point is to pick the most likely solution that we think solves, mitigates the issue and at the same time does not cause much change downstream. We discussed right of way and easements, um, that that will be an effort for the city both to ascertain what is currently an easement and then to obtain any easements that are necessary for the projects. The cost estimates we prepared that are in more detail in the last packet you received, um, contains construction and engineering and surveying costs. The construction costs have a breakout by unit cost, which are a combination of City of Austin, text doc costs. We've reviewed and scaled it to be what we think is appropriate, realistic for the city of Rollingwood with your location and the magnitude of these projects when they would go out to bid. We've also included traffic control and roadway reconstruction where it looks like it would be necessary and included engineering and survey costs. What we've not included, as I mentioned, is the right of way and easement research and then attaining easements where necessary. Uh, also, we, in our next draft, in our final version of this table, we want to add in T C Q and FEMA permitting requirements and those fees that would be associated with the projects. And lastly, we've been coordinating with the city to identify other projects that need to occur, maybe a water line replacement or pavement repair that while we're out there ripping up the road, let's bundle that in, let's do that to save on time and cost. Um, so all of those things are likely to increase the costs of the proposed projects. Finally, I just want to list our next steps for the project and then hear your comments and questions. Like I said, we've been working with city staff to refine our project concepts, receive feedback on the projects themselves and the cost estimates, and we are partnering with the Goodman Corporation to research external funding sources such as the FEMA flood mitigation assistance or Texas Water Development Board grants that the city could leverage to accomplish a bunch of these projects. We will finalize our draft plan, bring it back to council, incorporate your comments, and then wrap up our final plan and present for adoption. That's all I have. Love to hear your questions or comments, I know you haven't had long to digest all of the material, so also feel free to follow up with us.
So the flood plain maps have recently been updated, right?
Mm-hmm.
Did they also increase the magnitude of the storm events?
Are you talking about Atlas fourteen?
Yeah.
Yes, so I know that the city of Austin, nearby cities have their own ways of dealing with Atlas fourteen. I think the last time we talked with the city, it was unknown what the next steps would be for the city of Rollingwood in particular. You know, there are the ideas of using the five hundred year flood plain as a proxy for the one hundred, those sorts of things. Our data for our modeling has been prior to Atlas fourteen one hundred year storm event data. Does that answer your question?
I think it does, which means that the magnitude of these impacts
Mm-hmm.
could reasonably much, be much higher than what is represented, right?
Yes.
If we're, if we're using a, a, um, higher intensity storm event.
Yes, that's true.
Then, um, the necessary infrastructure would be bigger and the cost would be higher.
Yes.
Are you all, along with this, um, planning to present any recommendations for things that we could do to reduce the volume of runoff that we are having to deal with?
We are cognizant that changes in city policies could affect the, the future runoff in Rollingwood and our model is really a snapshot in time and it, really our modeling is not detailed enough to capture the effects of different surfaces within the city. That's one of the ways where this is a planning level model and it is only really good for planning and so additional modeling and design would be at a more granular level to take into account the city as it develops. We are not in our infrastructure plan making policy recommendations, sure.
But typically, do you design to control peak flow or do you design to control overall volume?
I am not a drainage designer, so I may defer on that question.
You know, I'm not, um, I'm not a hundred percent certain how the designers go about it. I mean, I, I would, my slightly educated guess would be is that they could look at one or, or both things. It's just our approach to policy. But, I mean, I think, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not standing, not seeing you guys.
Yeah, maybe get to the microphone since people are interested in this topic, they wanna hear.
I think what you're asking, right, through your different questions, is there, is, a, a council member asked if, if we were gonna get into the area of policy, right, and you asked a question about, uh-
Well, no, not, not policy, I'm just saying-
We're just assuming our roles here. We ask this question a lot, though.
I'm just looking at the dollar amount and knowing that this is not, not a high estimate. It's liable to be higher before we're said and done with all these things that we need to do and if there are things that we could also do to no cost things that we can do to decrease the amount of water that we have to deal with, um, because if we're going to be designing projects of this scope and we have no, and I will say the dirty word that nobody likes to hear, if we have no impervious cover limits for the city's residential properties, what basis do you use for designing?
Well, of course.
You know, so that, that's what, that's what I'm saying, I think that we, we are coming to a point where, where we're gonna have to consider that, because otherwise, how do you, how do you pick a number to design to?
So, if, if we can, for a second, go back to the Atlas fourteen question. Caroline mentioned that, uh, that the city of Austin is figuring out. The state, for example, text docs doing it a different way, their initial guidance, and I don't know if they've changed it since then or not, as I said, if, if design hasn't been started, they were gonna use whatever proxies they had for Atlas fourteen. The example would be you make the five hundred year flood, the new hundred year flood, hundred year flood becomes the fifty year flood. And if something was in the middle of, uh, construction, they wouldn't go back and do it and their area of debate was what do you do with something that's in the middle of design? The point being that different communities dealt with Atlas fourteen different ways, right? And, and certainly, you're correct, I think that if, uh, the city adopted a position on Atlas fourteen, which could range from, we looked at it, we're not gonna change anything, to we're gonna develop or adapt some sort of interim proxy, uh, you know, the five hundred, for example, becoming one hundred, or you were gonna go out and do a very, very detailed like flood plain study to really figure out in detail what the specific impacts Atlas fourteen would be. You, you could go and, and do any one of those things and yes, it would affect the cost of these projects. But now I'm gonna switch to what we just said a second ago, or a few minutes ago, which is these cost estimates and that the way I describe it, it's the beginning of a, of, of really sort of a, a, a journey, right? They helped us determine what order, um, a recommended order that the city could approach these issue areas in and to give you a very good head start on what, um, a solution would be and what you'd get out of detailed design or the things you're asking about, which is exactly, so we know when we made the recommendation that, um, for example, one of them has underground, you know, s- uh, storm drainage, right? And, you know, whether the pipe is this big or this big, we don't know now because that's gonna come through detailed design. So, and it, in part, it's because for such a relatively small community, right, um, this is a very complicated area. The relationships between, uh, water, you know, that, that, um, falls on and gets dealt with on a person's lot and what happens to it as it makes its way to the public right of way and, 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 you know, goes where it goes is a little bit, you know, complicated. So that's why this infrastructure plan in our view is, um, is, is really a beginning and the details of how big those pipes have to be, um, and the impacts of things like Atlas fourteen and with the proper approach to design is will come when the city moves towards taking these, I'm sorry, moves to taking these towards design. And that's, I mean, that is the way we would go about a roadway project, it's the way we'd go about a drainage project. So this is a, it's a, a slate, a program of projects that we hope you will use to now move your way through like the design and, you know, the construction process and how, if you take them in that order or if you manually adjust the order, whether you do them all at once or one or two every year, uh, you know, it's really a matter for the council to figure out. But you're right, it will be, um, uh, more complicated if the city decides sooner rather than later to deal with Atlas fourteen and it will be adjusted according to the methodology that the engineers and the designers use. But we can almost, you know, I think, we all feel comfortable saying that the cost of this will go up rather than down, and a big part of it is we're still coordinating with city staff to figure out where there might be other projects, other needs that they've already identified. There were some projects Caroline mentioned where the, the, the drainage work would be so extensive that we've incorporated estimates for like reconstructing a region of the road, for example, so that's built in. We're searching for things that maybe we didn't know about or pick up on when we're out in the field or that we didn't know that maybe staff had thought about or, you know, had on a list someplace else.
Can you clarify on the, on the Atlas fourteen issue as it relates to this? If we adopt the five hundred year, you're saying if we, if we take the ac- we have to take action to adopt the five hundred year flood plain as the one hundred year?
No, I, I'm not, I, I, and I, I wanna be clear, uh, at least on what I'm able to tell you and what I'm able not. I, I don't know what you have to do or not, I don't know if there's a, um, a specific timeline for addressing Atlas fourteen. I, I think what we're trying to say is some communities, while they're figuring out how to remap their flood plains because of the Atlas fourteen data, that have said, instead of just waiting until we get that done, just imagine what a massive undertaking that is for the city of Austin, they said, well, we're- They said, well, we're figuring that out as a proxy, as a substitution, as an interim measure. We're just gonna say that the five hundred year floodplain, well, the five hundred year event is now the hundred year.
Hundred, okay, that makes sense.
And then they go from hundred down to fifteen and so on. So they're saying it's gonna take us years to remap and figure out what the impact of that new rainfall data is on the city, and I'm using the city of Austin because they're right next door, right? What the ci- wha- on the city of Austin is. So while we're figuring it out, we really don't wanna wait because we're still building and dealing with a lot of stuff, so we'll just, for now, say the five hundred is the hundred year.
So you all use the assumption of the hundred year as the hundred year for this?
Right, because the city had not
We haven't clarified that.
And 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 for us to say, you should go ahead and do it without some evaluation, is not something we wanted to do. Now, if the city had said, you know, we're gonna take the five hundred year and make it the hundred year, we would have, you know, when we started, we would have done that.
So clearly, I mean, clearly, there would be a lot of analysis, but if we had said we want the five hundred year instead of the, like, as the hundred year, there would just be a lot more of our city that's under floodplain in the analysis than exists right now.
Right, and and you would just be making
Potentially.
You you potentially, you would you would just be saying, hey, we're gonna use that standard, and the models would show something different. You could guess that the models would show more areas that were flooded maybe uh more extensively, you know, sort of geographically larger area or maybe more severely. Um but you'd be just sort of buying into just one mass sort of adjustment as opposed to saying we're gonna go map, we're gonna remap the floodplains based on the rainfall data. Because that is a massive undertaking, so you you're you're not necessarily didn't um you know, so sort of mis- misstep because the city didn't say, hey, let's go from five hundred to one hundred. I think what you gotta realize is that when these go into design, at that point, the instructions to the engineers that design all of this are use the five hundred as the one hundred. Then what they're gonna have to do is now they're gonna know that they need to size things differently.
Okay, that makes sense.
Right.
Okay, so right now, at this stage, we haven't locked ourselves out of later saying, in this area, we want this designed for the five hundred year, rather than the one hundred year.
No, wh- what you'd need to be aware of, like with a few other things, is that it 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 will have a financial impact. So and I can, you know, if if you want, I can give you an example of what one of your neighbors did. Travis County, you know, has a bond program, and they funded their bond program. Uh I'm not gonna quote the amount because I can't remember exactly what it was, but they said, we're gonna do this many projects with this much money. And they went to the voters, they got a bond passed, and then they got smacked in the head with Atlas fourteen. And so what they did is they had um instructed their engineers, who just happen to be some guys I worked with, um to go out and look at the impact of Atlas fourteen of those projects. And that was a relatively detailed exercise. It it wasn't quite as expensive as what we're doing for you, but it did take some time and effort. And we didn't get to look at everything we wanted to look at. But what they wound up doing was they wound up increasing their budgets for their bond program as a whole by about thirty, thirty-five million dollars. Now, they were looking at two, three hundred million dollars worth of bond projects. And that increase included a couple of other things that they were trying to catch up with. But that's how they dealt with it. They just went back after the fact, had someone else do another analysis, and they said, we're just gonna add money to the to the pot. And the impact on individual projects, and this is the point, is getting dealt with as they design each project. So they just added more money to their pot, but they didn't know that this project was gonna get another five bucks, that was gonna get ten. They just made it available, and as every project gets designed, they're dealing with the updated rainfall data, and then they're figuring out how much of that pot they need to add into the project costs, if that makes sense. So
Thank you. I that I appreciate that explanation.
You're welcome. The yeah, while I'm here, the other thing that will affect project costs are, uh like Caroline mentioned, is, you know, whether or not we get additional information and there's other things you wanna build into the projects, that we'll be able to do, assuming the information is available before we end this. Um also, you you know, we put some proxies in for easements and right of way, but it's really getting to the bottom of the right of way and deciding if you wanna make sure that you have easements for every place that the water's connected to right now.
Um I have a question. I re- I remember some discussion uh during this project that um y'all would come back with some of this, like, low hanging fruit, some of the small, low cost projects that have a big impact, like landscaping, traffic dampening, curb cuts. I saw a curb cut in here, but I was kind of excited about, you know, natural landscaping kind of projects and traffic dampening. Y'all had mentioned different
So the traffic um traffic calming, right, I I don't really, and I hope I wasn't wrong, said recall about the landscaping, but the calming. Sure, that would be, um I mean, determining where to put traffic calming in the city, right, is a whole other exercise. If we had, um you know, collectively had some ideas as to where to put it. But that's something that you could argue would need to be modeled, you know, a vertical, like a bump or even a horizontal deflection would affect uh the drainage. Uh some of the low hanging fruit, um that is incorporated sort of into the, you know, the prioritiz- prioritization. There were areas where we thought, when we took an initial look, like there's a piece of curb missing, for example, and I can't remember the
Right, this is what I remember. You said we could easily do it and make a big impact and get get it done for no money.
Yes, and 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 then and that and that's true. And then we did the further analysis and realized that, um you know, based on feedback from staff is that we needed to be more careful with making sure that we didn't rush to recommend something that would hap- that, you know, that would be upstream, that would affect downstream. And so really, the whole, I I shouldn't say it that way, really, the the order of things is oriented toward making sure that something that gets done upstream doesn't affect downstream. So we had to be careful. So that sort of trumped the ability to say, but it's just a curb cut that needs to be replaced or it's just a little um uh y- y- you know, ditch or drain or something. Because if you did that, um you know, in the wrong, if that was upstream and you increased the flow, the speed and all that going downstream and you hadn't fixed your downstream problem, you'd p- you you'd make things worse. So we we did have, I don't know, I can't remember, I wanna say three or four areas where we thought, well, someone can go out, you know, exaggerating, right? Someone go out with a shovel and some some S full and fix this, but whoa. When we did further analysis, and it really is just looking at things logically, we realized that that probably could have caused more damage than good.
That's the old way of doing things, right?
So to to give a little bit of context on the discussion that we had, uh through this process, the city worked with K-Freeze to talk in terms of of systems. All right, so um can you guys please correct me if I'm lack on lacking on details or incorrect? Uh but uh if you're to look at the page, uh project update, so that's uh the little little spreadsheet here that's color coded. What you'll notice is the basin, it has a column for both basin and subbasin. And so the the presumption there simply is if you were doing or undertaking one of the items, uh A through U, for instance, and any of those letters appear in, say, basin five, that will impact all the other potential, potentially impact or will impact to some degree, uh the other letters that also appear in that basin. And then with regards specifically, I think it's basin five that's split up into the subbasin.
Yes.
Uh so you have a primary basin that has um a number, I think it was four, maybe, subbasins?
Right, that are kind of little tributaries.
Right. Um the idea being that if we were to approach this thoughtfully as a city, we could talk in terms of, you can't tackle necessarily A without impacting some other letter downstream, but what you could do is talk in terms of, we're going to tackle basin five, or we're gonna tackle basin ten, right? So that uh if we had, uh and we're always gonna have limited resources with with uh regarding uh funding. But uh if you're limited in such a way that you can't undertake the entire project at any given period, at least we can systematically talk about, if water is here, we can make sure it gets all the way out of out of this basin without having any any affirmative action on behalf of the city negatively impacting folks downstream. Conceptually, is that a fair, is that a fair summary?
Uh I I think so, right, and I
Okay.
Right, we 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 didn't, the reason we didn't point to this whole low hanging fruit is, we didn't want you to have like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and say, this is all we have, let's go fix this curb. And then lead it down a path uh where fixing that curb caused some other huge problem downstream because now you're keeping all the water on the road and you hadn't dealt with the road water issue down the street, right?
I appreciate that.
So that that's why we got away from that and actually looked at the list as a whole. And that list has been turned over a couple of times, right, internally, because we ranked them all, and it's okay, now we gotta do some manual rearranging because you gotta worry about the system thing, and you gotta worry about, are they in an order that's not gonna wreak havoc further downstream?
Another thing you may be thinking of is, we had a couple of areas with culverts that we thought, maybe if you clean out the culvert, you'll see some improvement and maybe it doesn't need to be upsized and try to be conservative. We didn't wanna assume that would, you know, mitigate the problem in an adequate way. So there was one, I think, on kind of in Pleasant or Park Hills in that situation. And then also on Rollingwood Drive with the sand filtration basin near the baseball fields. There's inlet that appeared to be clogged on the south side of Rollingwood. Um those were a couple of places that we'll note in the report, could be maintenance fixes, but we wanted to go ahead and say, if that doesn't work, this is what the project could be.
Council, you guys, any additional questions? I know we haven't had a lot of time, just for the sake of anybody else taking this in, either uh live now or or later down the line. I just wanna point out that this, there's a tremendous amount of information um that has been meticulously assembled and and delivered by K-Freeze, uh and council has only just received that uh this afternoon, early this afternoon. So not a lot of time uh to ingest and digest this yet. Uh I have no doubt that uh once we've really gotten to had an opportunity to dig into this, uh there'll be more. Uh so just for, again, for the sake of anybody um that tunes in now or later, uh we will be bringing this bringing this up in a public forum and and hope to have um a continued public discussion. Any additional conversation or questions, council? Thank you both very much. Appreciate everything.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll call uh item seven, discussion and possible action to amend the current professional services agreement by and between the city of Rollingwood and K-Freeze and Associates. Uh just to touch on that, and then I'll turn it over to Amber for detail. As we've heard from K-Freeze, this is an, this was an initial, a critical first step. Um and uh this is an ongoing process for us. The services that we've contracted or have previously contracted with K-Freeze, uh will take us through the end of the year. But as we, as we've just heard, uh that's by no means the end of our undertaking. Uh it's been nearly a year in the making now.
So council, this item, um in July, um you contracted with K-Freeze to perform the zoning review. And at the time, everything had to be done in such a way that um you authorized the mayor to use his expenditure authority, which was an amount uh not to exceed ten thousand dollars. And they are bumping up against that, and so now they are doing a really great job for us in terms of the zoning review. And so before you, there is a supplemental agreement, number one, which removes the not, amount not to exceed. So they, we just contract with them on ongoing basis, much like we do for um the drainage review with L and B.
So it's sort of a pass-through cost? It's the cost of the review is a cost that the person who owns the property is paying, it's not?
It's supposed to be a pass-through cost. We have another item to kind of discuss our our fees. We have, we do have a concern that we might not be charging enough for building fees, but
Which is a way of saying we're not capturing, uh recapturing
Right.
our entire cost. Not necessarily charging enough, regardless as to how much we charge, the mandate that we have is to recover our cost.
And will this budget item be in in that new section that we created?
In the new department, fifteen, yes.
Uh I move to uh take action to amend the current professional services agreement by and between the city of Rollingwood and K-Freeze and Associates as specified in the attachment in our packet.
Second.
I have a motion from Wendy and a second from Gavin. Uh council, do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. I'll call up the consent agenda, so items ten through fourteen.
I move to passage of the consent agenda.
Second.
So a motion from Gavin and a second from Wendy.
Can we pull out at least um number fourteen?
Request to pull fourteen.
And does and does it matter if number twelve says resignation instead of retirement because Jack officially retired, but
It doesn't matter. We don't, I mean, you can't force them to keep working for you.
It doesn't even matter if you approve it.
That's right.
I mean, I I I wish we could, but alas.
Are you, do you agree to the amendment that I made to the August twenty first meeting minutes that we got in the email? The supplemental packet, I mean?
Sorry?
There was a supplemental amendment.
Amendment, come on. I don't see it.
Disagreed.
Was it an email that just said that we, that clarified what request was made to change, I mean?
I requested it had changed to the minutes. Um it was in the packet, the supplemental agreement packet that we got, this afternoon at two fifty-four.
No, let's make the consent better, I have them.
Tell you what, is it easier if we take the consent?
Remove ten and fourteen.
Remove ten and fourteen.
I move to pass the consent agenda, the exception of ten and fourteen.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Gavin, a second from Wendy. Um discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh let's call it ten, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes from August twenty first, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting. September eleventh, two thousand nineteen, special meeting. September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, budget workshop. To the September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting. September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, special meeting. September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, budget workshop. October second, two thousand nineteen, special meeting. And October seventh, two thousand nineteen, special meeting. Our city secretary's been very busy, so thank you very much for that, Ashley. Um I know that uh council member Patillo, Amy, you had uh made a request for a change in um gosh, and now I'm blanking on which one of all these minutes it was.
It was August twelfth.
August
I just wanted to clear a clarification on
Twenty first.
It's twenty first.
I mean, August twenty first, thank you.
Thank you.
Flipping numbers today. Um I just wanted a clarification on the second page, the third paragraph in the bottom. Starting with after discussion, just to clarify, um help clarify why there were two different motions made. I thought the way it read that it was a little confu- would be confusing to understand that, at least from my understanding of what I said during the meeting and what was proposed. Do I need to read out the proposal? I know we all got it in the supplemental.
Correct. Not everybody had a chance to read it if it came out this afternoon.
I get that.
So
I I apologize that I did not have the opportunity to review all the minutes, the minute it came out on Friday, and make sure that we could update the packet. But the requ- the request that I made was um that the third paragraph from the top be replaced with the city council discussed the amended ordinance reviewed by the planning and zoning commission. Council member Hudson proposed an additional amendment to section fourteen point two oh two B three. Council member Patillo stated that what was being proposed Council member Patillo stated that what was being proposed by council member Hudson was a substantive change from what came back from the planning and zoning commission and that this topic should go back before then, before action is taken. Attorney Charles Zek agreed and recommended the same.
Do you need a motion to adopt the minutes with the change?
If you're inclined to do that.
I would like to make a motion, do I need to read all of them, or?
No.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the minutes in agenda item ten with the change that Amy Patillo requested.
Also good.
I have a motion from Wendy and a second from Amy, uh, discussion, council?
So in the past, we've never had minutes for workshops? Are those required?
Yes.
Okay.
Every public meeting?
Every, every, every meeting has to have minutes. The detail of those minutes is up to you, but you have to have something, but.
So the fact that it's called a workshop and not a meeting?
Doesn't make a difference.
Additional discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are adopted, thanks again, Ashley, for the diligence in getting that knocked out for us. Uh, fourteen was also called, discussion, possible action on ordinance amending the city of Rollingwood's code of ordinances by deleting certain masonry regulations and requirements applicable to residential and commercial structures. Charlie, um, you wanna give us, uh,
Certainly.
the answer there, please?
The Texas legislature, this legislative session in House bill number twenty four thirty nine, adopted regulations or statutory regulations that prohibit municipalities from adopting or enforcing a rule, a charter provision, ordinance, order, building code, or other regulation that prohibits or limits directly or indirectly the use or installation of a building product or material in the construction, renovation, maintenance, or other alteration of a residential or commercial building, if the building product or material is approved for use by a national code published within the last three code cycles that applies to the construction, renovation, maintenance, or other alteration of a building. We have a ordinance on the books which specifically requires that eighty percent of exterior wall surfaces, uh, be constructed of masonry glass. You can't do that anymore, so we're deleting that from our code.
So can an HOA have that requirement?
Um, I don't know if the legislation affected HOAs or not, um, I'm only familiar with its, its application to local governments. I don't think it applied to HOAs, but it definitely applied to cities.
So does that mean that we need to establish an HOA for the city of Rollingwood and put that in our?
You cannot estat- establish an HOA for the city of Rollingwood. Your only authority as a general all type A city, or a home rule city for that matter, is, I don't even think a home rule city could do it, but your only authority to regulate, um, through, is through zoning. But as I read this, the legislation, even if you were to establish an HOA, it would be the city establishing the HOA, so it would be, still be a city rule and a city, uh, city order, so it still wouldn't be enforceable even if you could do it, which you can't, I don't think. General law cities don't have that authority.
Just trying to understand why an HOA could have restrictions on building materials, but a city cannot.
We actu- we actually don't know that that, that's the answer.
Well, I don't think that's why it's asked.
So what this says is, you could have a hundred percent sticker.
No, this says is you could have a hundred percent wood.
This says you could have, you could have a hundred percent any wood.
Okay.
This, this.
As long as it's authorized by a building code that goes back three cycles.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not, and we may come across other issues in your code as they pop up, these are the obvious ones. But it's more than just exterior material, it is any material that is in a building code. Uh, electrical materials, plumbing materials, any number of materials. So long as it's authorized by a code, we may, that goes back three cycles, we may not prohibit its use.
Thanks for that explanation, that's helpful.
Good, thank you, Charlie.
Um, in this one, we're, we're deleting section fourteen point oh two point one two eight, the structural alter- alterations for historic structures. Um, it's saying it can be made without conformance to masonry and height requirements upon grant of special, uh, exception by the board of adjustment, so that whole article's being deleted, but it's, I know the masonry isn't applicable anymore, but the height could still be applicable, right? And it's like a historic structure that they're referencing? So, why does that whole paragraph?
Be, be, well, so, this is how I read it, so this four, one fourteen dot zero two, one two eight says, structural alterations necessary for preservat- and this was all in our masonry, as I understood it. Or continued use of the building or structure designated of a special historical or just, may be made without conformance to the masonry, so it dealt with the masonry and height requirements, it's our common grant of a special exception. And you're, you're right, we may want to, I, I may wanna come back and look at the issue in the context of the height restrictions. I don't know if we caught that, that it was a height issue as well, but certainly this, I thought this applied, this was only applicable to the masonry issue, so it wasn't applicable to the ordinance at all, in any context.
But, yeah, right. I'm just thinking, like, say the entrance signs to the city of Rollingwood, if we wanted to designate those as historic structures so that they stayed, um, you know, that this, this would allow, um, I guess, the alterations necessary to preserve it if part of it fell down.
I think the better, as I think through, I think the better approach would probably come back, because the, the, so long as it meets certain requirements under the, um, under the legislation that are, that puts it in a historical category, but it has to meet certain requirements. And so long as it meets those requirements, you are still allowed to regulate, um, the materials. And so probably the better approach would be to come back, um, and put in regulations that you'd like to have that relate to a particular hor- historical district or historical.
Yeah, I, I was trying to look into that a little bit, just being a geek one day, reading, and I saw that there were certain requirements to have, um, to designate something as being historic and I don't think that we, it's something that, like, the secretary of state has to have, like, a program that the city follows or, um, there have to be other requirements that the city would have to meet in, in order to have a program to be able to do that. Um, so I would love to see us kinda bring that back and see, I mean, if it makes sense.
Certainly, we can, I mean, if, if, if it's the consensus of city council, I can take a closer look at, because I have not yet. I haven't, haven't had the opportunity to do that for request.
I don't think it's worth spending money or time on, if, I mean, it's just something I was geeking out on.
But that would, but that would be the better approach, is, is to look at, if you have historical areas that, that meet the qualifications to create the requirements specifically for those historical areas.
Okay.
That would be the better approach.
We have.
No.
We do.
So I would rec- I would recommend, though, that what we do is, um, 'cause.
Are there height, are there height issues that we need to be concerned about in historical districts in the community?
There are height restrictions that we have. We don't have any historical.
We don't have any historical dis- okay, so it doesn't even, so it doesn't matter, so you can delete the whole thing, right, okay.
So we have no historical district.
So there, that's where we're at.
So does this change have the potential to affect our fire rating?
Their what?
The fire rating. If we have restrictions now on homes having to be eighty percent masonry and now we're eliminating that and now.
I, I don't think so, I'm not, I'm not a firefighter, um, so you're only getting my knowledge and experience of sitting through lots of council meetings and listening to firefighters, so I guess maybe I play a firefighter on TV. But your fire rating is not based on, on the construction of the, um, buildings in your community. It's based on your authority to put fire, your ability to put fire out, fires out, in other words, the, the equipment that you have, the regulations, I mean, the, um, uh, the water ability, that's what I, my understanding is based on, but I could be wrong.
Water.
But even if it does, it doesn't matter.
If we have more, if we have more fuel, then your ability to put out the fire is gonna require more resources.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we wanna make their, I don't know if we wanna make their case for them, but, uh, what I can tell you is what's in front of us right now is, uh, in line with, um, um, s- state law, state statute, so.
Right, no, I, I understand that, I was just wondering if we also need to talk to our fire marshal and see if that.
Yeah, just a quick Google search says, an ISO fire rating is a score that escalates how well-equipped your community's fire department is to put out fires. So, it's not based on what, what buildings are made out of, it's based on how well-equipped is your, is your fire department to be able to put out when ever fire occurs. Pretty equipped, have you ever seen McKay with a hose? But the mayor is correct, all of those are legitimate questions, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the fact.
Doesn't change what's in front of us currently.
Do we have a motion, or should we need one?
We do not have a motion.
Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion to take action to approve an ordinance amending the city of Rollingwood's code of ordinances by deleting certain masonry regu- regulations and requirements applicable to residential and commercial structures as outlined in the attached ordinance on page fourteen. Is that too specific? Okay.
Your motion from Wendy?
Second.
Second from Gavin, discussion, council?
So it's not actually page fourteen, does that make a difference?
It's page ninety four.
It's item fourteen.
Page, item fourteen, sorry.
Page, page ninety four.
Page ninety four. Thank you, Sarah.
Additional discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries four oh, if we could show that, uh, council member Patillo is not on the dais for the vote. Uh, item fifteen, discussion, possible action on ordinance providing for reasonable accommodation or modification for residential issues. Uh, this was the topic du jour for a little while, it has clearly cooled off. Uh, that said, uh, we have had legal counsel, um, provide us with an ordinance, that, much discussed ordinance, and I will allow Charlie to walk us through it.
So I'm happy to walk through the entire ordinance, but.
Probably not necessary.
Yeah, so what I wanna tell you, what it does is essentially, um, part of the issues that y'all had when that came up was that you did, there was no process in place for somebody to come into the city and request a reasonable accommodation, which they may or may not be entitled to under the law. And, um, so what we have done here is, we have created an ordinance that creates a process so that if, in the future, somebody, um, decides that they would, they need a reasonable accommodation under Fair Housing Act or whatever, um, this is the process that we, they would follow. This process was created based on a review of multiple other jurisdictions and DOJ, um, guidance and best practices from other communities, and so we put this together and it, um, as a process and essentially, the end result is that if somebody would like a reasonable accommodation, they must come into the city, make a request, fill out an application, um, then that application is then, uh, reviewed for purposes of whether or not they would be entitled to the permit under specific, um, guidance, um, based on the, the law. And then the city administrator would make a determination as to whether or not they were entitled to the accommodation permit and would either, um, grant or deny the accommodation permit and provide a written decision with request to that, with, with regards to that request. And this, um, ordinance, the city administrator is the final adjudicator as to whether or not a, um, reasonable accommodation, the individuals or entity is entitled to a reasonable accommodation permit. Um, there are no appeals to, uh, the city council or to the zoning board of adjustment or any, or any other body. Um, if they disagree, they would file suit against the city. And the, I believe the ordinance includes language that, um, the decision is to be made in conjunction with, um, um, conference with whoever the city attorney happens to be. And that's the broad outline of what this, what this ordinance does. Basically puts in a structure so that there's a process that can be followed, if a reasonable request is required.
Thank you, Charlie.
Request for a reasonable accommodation, if requested.
A little distracting, I suppose. Counsel, uh, we've, we've actually, uh, we've been through, uh, a lot of the, the, that, certainly the high points and the functionality, uh, and the intent of the, uh, the ordinance in front of us. You guys inclined to take ac- action at this point?
I move to approve an ordinance providing for reasonable accommodation or modification for residential uses. Second.
I have a motion from Wendy and a second from Amy, uh, count, or, discussion, council?
So when we first started talking about this, you had indicated that there was a possibility for reasonable accommodation for a disability and also for religious purposes?
I don't remember having that conversation, this is only for, this is only for disabilities.
Do we need to address the religious?
I don't think so. The best place to address that is through your normal regulatory process.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, council and, and council. Charlie, thank you very much for, uh, getting us through that. Uh, item sixteen, discussion, possible action to consider policies and procedures to define limited parameters, and recommending authority of working groups, subcommittees, and task forces formed to discuss city business. Just for context, council, this was on our agenda last, uh, last month. Uh, we had a partial dais and it was brought back to us, um, this month, uh, so that we could have a full discussion. We received some thoughts from council member Hunley, uh, but, um, we did not have a lot of time to bring that in. Uh, I'm not sure if you guys wanna take a discussion here. Um, I believe those thoughts, uh, were delivered to our city attorney, uh, with the intent that the city attorney could, uh, take a closer peek uh, at potentially, uh, codifying the process for the city.
Yes, and I, I brought this agenda item because, um, we don't have a formal process now in our code to establish subcommittees or working groups or parameters around how those work and who they report to. So, um, I just wanted to see if there was interest on the dais of us having council, um, come up with a recommendation for our code of how those subcommittees are formed, um, and then open meetings, requirements for subcommittees or working groups, uh, is just clearly defined in our code and then, um, and added to the code, so we would have that direction, so. If there's consensus that we'd like something like that to happen, then I would like to ask, uh, Charlie to work on that for us.
I think that would be really helpful because it seems like, over time, different boards and commissions have kinda created their own rules for doing that and they've changed chair to chair, and so I think giving the chairs or our boards and commissions a little bit of flexibility, if, if there's a, if the rules allow some flexibility still, um, to the chairs to kinda fit things with what works with the problem that's trying to be solved and the reason for forming it and, um, lengths of time and all those different things, um, but provide some uniformity. I think that's a, a good thing.
And, um, I think true, it will help to define when an open meeting, public meeting should be, um, noticed, um, and then if it's a working group, define that that's a working group and it's not a public meeting and that, that working group reports back to that board or commission and not to the city council for the recommendation of that specific board or commission to make a formal recommendation to the city council.
Yeah, we ran into that issue on planning and zoning one time, when we were trying to just do a work group and people got upset that we didn't.
people got upset that we didn't do a open meeting on it. There's no offense meant, but it was.
There's no quorum, then it would be defined here, hey, there's not a quorum, we're not required to have a meeting, we're gonna bring our work product back to the commission for the open meeting and then.
Is that anything you've seen of that kind of guidance, Charlie?
I'm sorry?
Have you ever seen that sort of?
Yeah, it comes up, it co- it does come up, what I'm hearing is that you wanna, um, you want clarity for your boards and commissions with respect to compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, with respect to how and how working groups are formed and the working group's authority in relationship to the co- the, the board in which it, it is formed from and their obligations to comply with the Texas Open Meeting Act, if any. It sounds like you're wanting to say is to make it clear in whatever policy is drafted that if a working group, a committee of, it wouldn't be a committee of the body, right, it would be, anyway, a working group, a less, less than a quorum, that they would not have an obligation, but they would be to comply with the Texas Open Meetings Act, but they would have an obligation to bring that work product back to the com- to the board or committee for full discussion at a meeting that is in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Right.
As to all that, I think also some jurisdictional component of what they're.
With the scope of their authority?
The scope of the duties.
So my recommendation would then be that, the policy be that the city council, this, the city council determine the scope of that jurisdiction and that they, and that the, and that the city councils make that specific jurisdictional statement in the creation of whatever board is created. Cause I think it would be difficult to, unless I'm misunderstanding your point, I think it would be difficult to, to state a broad jurisdictional policy.
I think the point is like with VOA, it's outlined, it's in statute.
Right, this, the statute is very clear with respect to its specific, yes.
So it's the same concept, but for, for lack of a better term, the lesser boards and commissions that are not recognized in statute.
So for each board and commission or, or one general policy, I think my question is, one, I think a general policy for all boards and commer- jur- boards and commissions from a jurisdictional standpoint could be problematic. We could obviously create jurisdictional parameters for each board and commission that's currently in existence and we would put that in whatever ordinance that, where they're created, we could do that.
Would that hamper like them being able to do something if they needed a work group on some specific item and like, oh, we don't have the authority to have a work group on it?
I think you can give them broad jurisdiction.
Right, yeah, you, you would have a, an initial ordinance that says boards and committees make or emit work groups. Those work groups have to do X, Y, or Z though, if they're going to be a work group, like, report back to the main board with, in an open meeting. Those types of things, and then, um, then each individual board could have its specific jurisdictional authority, which I think it's, it's policy, but I, I think it helps with the, um, proper functioning of government because, um, then you don't have a board or a commission who is doing something that this body, who ultimately is the final approval.
Not in their lane.
Exactly, or doesn't even want them considering because you have no interest or, or desire as a body to even do it. So you're not wasting staff resources, if they're wanting legal assistance, you're not wasting money. Um, they understand where their parameters are, so, and that's an, isn't, is an efficient use of resources. So that's not unusual, that's a long answer to your question.
There was recently a fair amount of that anyway with, uh, a subcommittee that I think probably prompted this discussion. Just a, a lack of guidelines provided a lack of clarity of what their objective was, which, uh, created a, a fair amount of confusion as they were organizing anyway. So I think, uh, when you start talking about this, Charlie hit on a, a couple of aspects, this is probably a policy question largely.
Uh, well, the, certainly the parameters, um, the parameters of, you know, the, of the working group is definitely a policy question. But the stuff that I sort of hit on, I mean, that's easy to put in.
So perhaps, perhaps providing, uh, these boards and commissions, uh, some guidance or some thoughts on, uh, not just, uh, jurisdiction necessarily, but also, uh, kind of, uh, scope, uh, and even, um, composition and formation of, of these subcommittees. Might, might be helpful for them, uh, as they're assembling. Uh, I think it's also a good idea to give them a positive indication that they don't have to do it all themselves. It, it is a good idea to reach out to other members of the community and bring them into the, into the discussion in a, in a meaningful way.
And that protects our volunteers as well, who are volunteering for the subcommittees um, from being, um, accused, is a strong word, but of not following the Open Meetings Act when we have parameters there saying, hey, this is how it's formed, this is when you have to have an open meeting and when you don't, so. I appreciate that if you, if, if we can give some guidance to legal counsel to help us to, um, create that policy and come back with it, um, the next meeting or two.
Um, whatever y'all want to do, I mean, we can, I'll get it to you in the timeframe you want.
Do you need a motion or is just kind of?
Just the, consensus is fine if council's comfortable with that.
I would like to see that done.
Yeah, just a realistic timeframe, whatever you think.
Okay, alright. Necessary.
And then if, if it's okay with council, I'll get with, um, Amber for any guidance or input as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Item seventeen, discussion possible action on a request from the park commission to approve a bid from Viking Fence to furnish two new gates to close off fields one and two at a cost of two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
Um, council, this is a request, um, that wasn't budgeted, so it's before you to consider whether you would like to purchase two new gates to close off fields one and two at a cost of two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Um, that's what park commission is recommending. Um, I did ask Amber to include in the packet the current lease of athletic fields, um, that we have to just look and see who's responsible for the fencing and gate and repairs. Is this, the proposal is to actually repair some of the fencing and then put new panels in, um, and so, um, that was something I wanted to have in there so we could talk about that since it's being requested that it come out of the general fund, uh, instead of having Little League pay for it.
That's confusing to me, I'm, I'm not sure I understand the request.
Um, well, yeah, um.
They have a bid that's broader in scale and they narrowed it down to two things.
But why, why isn't this a cost to the Little League? For their, for their fencing, based on our contract?
Oh, I don't know why, I was just explaining why it was, yeah, the date was.
So whose, whose request is it that those fence, that the gates be put in, is it the Little League's request or is it the park commission's request?
It's park commission's request.
Because there were gates there that were taken off.
And it was at the expense of some citizens that they took them off, right?
I think it was some Little League people that took them off.
There were some citizens, I, I can't, I remember I was on park commission at the time and the.
Okay, I didn't do it.
The idea was when dogs were allowed on fields three, four and five that they took the fences off of fields one and two so that there wouldn't be enclosed areas for dogs, so that they wouldn't have a closed-in dog park in those, and so they took them off. And some people from girl softball, I can't remember who exactly, uh, came out and did the labor and removed the fences and Jackie Bob helped.
Yep.
That was why they were removed to begin with.
And council, this is in front of you, there seems to be some confusion about who is responsible for what at the fields. And in the past, it has been the leaseholder that has been responsible for everything. But recently, there has been this new direction of park commission to ask city staff to go perform maintenance, to go clean up dog waste, to go, um, paint and repair the field house, to, and this is, this is one of these things that they wanted was just this, the city to go do this, and, um, so I guess I'm also asking for a little guidance from council as to where you feel, I feel as staff that the leaseholder is responsible for the maintenance of the fields, um, but I continue to receive directions that this is not the case and that the city is supposed to be responsible.
Who do you receive this direction from?
Um, members of the park commission.
Okay, well, you work for us, not the park commission. So. There's that.
This seems to me to be part of the overall discussion of what we include in the lease and, and how we um, develop the RFP that we send out for new requests for lease is what we want the city to be responsible for versus what we want the lessee to be responsible for and whether or not we accept more responsibility, um, not necessarily city staff doing it, but contractors like Clean Scapes or whoever we have, fencing contractors or whatever, but so that there is a, um, potential cost savings if you have somebody doing all of it instead of the Little League doing part of it and us doing part of it, and then we can increase the cost of the lease if we are being responsible for more of the the maintenance and upkeep of our park facilities, so.
So respectfully, I would say that what's before us is a request for improvement where we have an existing contract that we've extended that allocates the requirement to update fencing to the lessee. So, yes, when we get to the RFP, we can talk about it, but right now we have an existing contract that we extended and it's unclear to me why the lessee hasn't been asked to do these things and if they've declined to do them, then that's a different issue. So, I guess I'm, I don't know, I'm looking for.
Cause the park commission feels that it's a burden on the lessee and they feel the citizens of Rollingwood should pay for more capital improvements that have happened at the park. The RFP is not the problem, the problem was the proposal that was submitted and the proposal's the thing that got the stir of the pot. The RFP was not the problem, park commission has said that on numerous occasions. It was, they were upset because they didn't like alternative ideas. And so did some citizens.
So, I'm still, it's still unclear to me though, like, if, is it that the fences are not being maintained and they need to be repaired?
Yeah, there's just gates that aren't there, they're just, they're wanting new gates to put back in.
They want new gates to put back there, so.
Well, but the park commission wants the gates put in.
But there's also.
There are.
But the lessee is, the lessee has the premises the way that they want them.
They haven't requested any.
And they haven't requested any of this.
There's some maintenance too, cause like, there's some bowing at the bottom, at the bottom.
No, there definitely is.
Yeah, there's some madeups that needs to happen.
There's, yeah, but they're also in their defense on a lease that expires at the end of the year, so.
Yeah, no, I, I would say no.
Are we gonna hold it? Are we gonna hold it?
I'm totally different.
What'd you do if you were the tenant?
I'd say no.
I, I mean, I think that this is certainly something to consider having, uh, as a maintenance requirement uh, or repair that we want done in future contracts, but the question is whether or not we use our taxpayer money, um, to pay for this repair and replacing the fence, or if we have the clubs that are leasing the facilities pay for the repair. And to me, we still have a lease with the Little League, so if we wanted the repair, that that repair would be on them, if we don't want it right now, if it's not urgent, then it's something that we can deal with in the new lease, I'm fine with that.
I would deal with it in the new lease.
It's.
But this, this.
But I don't, I don't know that the city should subsidize that
I don't know why we're making any improvement, yeah.
right now, we're, we're being asked right now to pay for this cost, and that's, that's the act.
This is, this agenda item is not talking about repair of the fencing. This agenda item says furnish two new gates to close off the fields one and two.
Yes, correct.
And the Little League, my understanding, is not asking for this.
Correct.
This is the park commission asking for this, so I don't know how we could make the Little League pay for this.
Well, we can't make them pay for it right now.
Right.
Whoever the tenant is, but the whole idea is just whoever the future tenant is to have them to use, you know, there's a whole slew of things that need to be done, have them bring the maintenance back up to par and make some capital improvement.
And presumably. Presumably whoever the new tenant is will put the fences in a state in which they need them to be for their usage.
Right, so if the new tenant decides they need enclosed fields, you'll probably see new gates. If they don't need new fields or enclosed fields, then you won't.
What is the, uh, why are, why are they wanting these gates? Is it to close them off?
Uh, they want them to close them off so that they can put signs on them that say no dogs allowed on field one, no dogs allowed on field two. Um, that's, and then that would keep people off of those fields and put them in three, four and five. And they don't think the Little League should pay for it because it's for the dog park use.
So the signs couldn't go up without the gates there?
Or for the. Well, it's basically keeping the dogs off of those two fields.
That's what the discussion. Right.
Correct.
So, I think that they want to put the signs that are put on the gate and close it off.
The traffic. Waiting the gates up makes sense, just the timing of all this stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
That's really the issue, is it's just part of the bigger scope of what is going on right now.
And who pays for it is.
Yeah.
So, but there were gates, at least on field one, there was a gate there that they took off so that the dogs wouldn't go on there.
Well, so. So.
So now they're wanting to put a gate back on there, so that the dogs don't go on there.
But they did, they did, they did it to accommodate, they did it to accommodate the dogs going on fields three, four and five.
They didn't take the, the gates off to accommodate that.
Yes, they did, exactly, that's why they did it.
They did, and they put them over on three, four and five to help save costs.
So it wouldn't be enclosed.
That was part of the grand bargain, if you will, so that we could all agree on co-usage of fields. Is there a chance that somewhere on our property there are some gates stacked?
There is a chance, I bet.
If I recall correctly, some of the gate material from one and two was actually used on three, four and five.
That's what they were just saying, they moved the gates from here to there.
Ah, that's right.
That was my point, sorry about that.
One, one pair, one pair of gates, yeah.
So I don't think they're stacked, I think they were reused, cause they were trying to figure out how to make it the most cost-effective gating.
We can go circular in this all night long if we want to, guys.
Yes.
And the real issue is, is we need to issue an RFP so we can get some proposals in
Mm-hmm.
and then negotiate with whoever the future.
If I could provide a little bit of clarity, the real issue for right now is whether or not you want to allocate two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars per the park commission's request.
No, we do not, or I don't.
I don't.
Do we, before I show my hand.
You already showed.
Do we have it budgeted?
We do not have this budgeted. It's not.
Guess that's something else.
We budgeted for park expenditures
Re Easter.
so that the lessee would maintain and repair all of the assets. So that's, I feel like my role in this is protecting the city's budget and knowing what's in there and then also, um, you know, holding our contractors accountable for their responsibilities.
Okay.
This is just one of many things that need to be done, so we're just like, we can either address it all at one time or we can sit here and piecemeal this together over months and months and months and go back and forth on it. I would just rather address it all at once.
And if I could third, talk about a third item.
Personally.
There, this is a project, an improvements project. Improvements project, funds can come from RCDC for our park. Perhaps you don't, even if this was a consideration, perhaps the right way to have gone was to talk to RCDC about a potential project funding.
Well, our city attorney did a great job explaining it to the members of park commission. Uh, unfortunately, some of the other members who did, did not attend
Were unable to attend, that's fair.
Uh, are still confused on that issue.
Well, perhaps, perhaps they were able to, uh, w- r- listen to this discussion
Yeah.
and, uh, get brought up to speed. Counsel, do we have any action on this item? Not hearing any, I'll assume there isn't any, and I move on to item eighteen. Discussion possible action on recommendation from the park commission regarding a shade screen on the athletic field.
I believe, uh, softball, maybe Little League too, is going to pay for this shade screen. Um, it's not, I think it's gonna be higher, Buck, maybe you can speak to what it's actually.
I don't, honestly, I don't know.
Okay, I think it's gonna be higher, um, not as low. Um, but they want it to be able to block the sun out of the kiddo's eyes when they're playing.
Um, but they want it to be able to block the sun out of the kiddo's eyes when they're playing, when they're.
I do know it's for girls softball, it's for softball, cause the sun hits all their infielders and outfielders like directly in the eye.
It's gonna be softball, yeah. Okay, so it would, it would be a, um, a safety concern.
A good area of signage.
Oh, yeah.
So who's paying for the shade screen?
Uh, softball, okay. So we're just making sure that.
Stir the pot, stir the pot.
And then give you the.
And is it field two?
I think it's just gonna be the top one.
It is, field two, correct.
Field two, okay.
Field two, yes, sorry.
They've been wanting to do this for a while.
I would move to approve the.
This is a taller one.
I'm not even, well, y'all are, sorry, I'm not y'all as the liaison, sorry.
You go ahead. I like, you can make the motion, you go.
Uh, I would move to approve the recommendation of the park commission regarding a shade screen on the athletic field fence of field two.
Second.
Who motion is second, discussion council? All in favor?
So it's not really on the fence, it's on the, on the backstop.
Correct.
Right?
That's what it looks like. Who provided this, who provided this picture?
To be more serious.
On the back. Uh, Steve Frank.
Alright.
So, would you like for me to amend my motion? I would.
Uh, yeah, I just. I, I just wonder if that's more clear if we call it the backstop instead.
I will, sure. So, uh, I would amend my motion to say, um, discussion, or approve a recommendation from the park commission regarding a shade screen on the backstop of the fencing of field two.
Second.
Is that clear?
Yeah.
Motion from Amy, a second from Wendy, uh, discussion council? All in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Alright.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank council. Could we also, uh, make a note as a reminder, uh, I think it was I wanna say it was softball, girl softball that had talked, uh, and council has previously approved, um, a, uh, rolling wood logo that was going to be, uh, applied to their backstop at one point, uh, thought it was a pretty good idea, and as I mentioned, uh, council had approved that previously, but, uh, I'm not sure where that status is, perhaps, perhaps it's also wrapped up in the lapsing lease terms. Nineteen, discussion, possible action, recommendation, the, to the city council regarding a process for requests for proposals for the operation, maintenance, and ground lease of the city of Rollingwood athletic facilities.
And council, you have what is now referred to as the draft RFP. Um, park commission has said they were okay with the RFP, um, as it was written, so this is draft now. Um, they provided some thoughts, as did council member Patillo, um, some amendments, um.
And I stand by, uh, my name is on that as well.
I think, right, the first thoughts and ideas come from.
Oh yeah, can you clarify the, it's that page nineteen, RFP thoughts and ideas, is that coming out of the subcommittee or is that approved by the parks commission?
It was not approved officially by the park commission, they did not make an official recommendation. Um, but this, it just came to me in an email from Catherine Horn.
So is it, so we don't know if it's the subcommittee's recommendation either, we just know it's from Catherine Horn?
Right.
Okay, the email I got from Catherine Horn said, to be very honest, we have never had any problems with the RFP language, but are happy to add our thoughts. So, we, um.
It sounds contrary to a lot of the messaging that we received.
Right.
Prompting us to get back to where we are now.
So the RFP that we have is not controversial right now, but there are some thoughts that they've added to it. And there's an amendment that Amy and I worked on together. Um, I think it's a well-crafted RFP, I think it's meant to be broad to allow, uh, people to respond with a proposal. Um, I thought maybe, Charlie, if you wouldn't mind, just for the sake of clarification, and I hate to put you on the spot. But would you please explain the RFP process for us? And then what it means when somebody responds and what they can and can't do in a response, so that we know for the record.
Okay, so I'll make it really easy for this particular RFP. Um, legally, you're not obligated to even go out for RFPs, um, for the services you're requesting. Uh, there are times when you are legally obligated to go out for RFPs and.
Are we, because we have an ordinance that says every five years, all contracts?
Well, let me re, let me rephrase then, the state law does not obligate you to go out for RFPs, I wasn't aware of your ordinance. That said, unless your ordinance says anything differently, um, when you, there are no specific requirements for an RFP. There are no, um, uh, specific guidelines for issuing the RFP or accepting the RP, RFP, or rejecting the RFP, or negotiating something different into an agreement that wasn't originally in the RFP, you can do any and all of those things in this particular process. Uh, because again, the state law does not require you to go out for RFP, RFQ, or do any sort of, um, specialized procurement service for this particular situation. Does that, is that helpful, or is that?
It, it is helpful because the feedback that, that I got is that the problem with the proposal that was received was that it did not adequately address the RFP and went beyond the scope of the request. So in the future, if we get something that is not completely within the box of the request, are we allowed to still consider?
In this context, you, you are, you are allowed to reach out to them and say, you didn't address this, can you address it? Or you're, it's, it's your, it's your RFP, it's your, you're the governing body that authorized it. Uh, state law doesn't dictate, um, that you're required to do it, so there are no restrictions under the state law. So if you choose to accept a RFP that, that does not completely address your RFP, or goes outside the box, you're free to accept it and negotiate with them. Uh, it's actually a good, it sounds like what you're looking for is a good starting point.
Yeah.
And, and, and that starting point can be used to do all sorts of things.
Just to clarify one point. There is nothing to stop us from going back and renegotiating a proposal that has been presented under this process.
No, no, none at all.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess the question I have, I mean, uh, Wendy and I did work on the, the two additions that are on page one twenty-six of the packet of the proposed amendments. Um, one of them would add, uh, paragraph seven, which would ask the applicant to identify any alternatives, um, to the details that they provo- proposed in the event that we were to do the separate pet off-leash area that's in our park master plan. Um, with fields three, four, and five, um, being available also for off-leash when no organized sports are occurring on the field. And then separately, in the event that all off-leash options at Rollingwood Park are moved to the separate pet off-leash area. So it would potentially give us an opportunity to hear what the, um, impact is to a leaseholder of having to share that field with pets. Um, or not share it, um, and then we also had added, or were proposing, um, and wondering what proposed capital improvements someone may, um, propose that would align with our master plan and how they might be proposed in relation to proposed terms. Um, and I think that some of that was in the initial proposal that we got, um, and I think some of it was still to be determined, but uh, it would, what I'm wondering is if we went with the original RFP without modifications, like without the proposed amendments that Wendy and I put together, or the other thoughts and ideas. Um, I mean, the applicants would have the ability to see things that were being discussed and potentially use that as material when they make their proposal, would that be correct, Charlie?
Could you restate that?
So if we, if we weren't to, if we were to just reissue the same RFP without amendment, without the proposed amendments that Wendy and I had, would there be anything that would keep someone who is wanting to respond from looking at things that we were interested in seeing? Like paragraph seven and eight that we've proposed here and responding to those in the RFP?
No, no.
Would it be better to have them in the RFP, or does it, is, that's a policy choice, whether we?
It's a policy decision.
Okay.
It's certainly better to have everything in the RFP that you would like your folks, folks to respond to.
To respond to, okay.
I think we're overthinking all of it, because we've already said no to the most innovative and creative reply that we're gonna see. It's not like people are beating down our door. Have you got a lot of calls, like, when's that RFP coming out?
No.
Right, so I could put whatever we want to in it and.
But maybe that'll change with all the, uh, with all the attention we've brought to this subject.
Alright.
Stay positive.
And if we publish it in the newspaper this time, is that what was missing?
Oh, that was.
Cause it was.
Well, actually, I misspoke and it was published in the, the statement and the picket yard. I found the document or it's wrong.
Oh. You didn't give us a heads up on that, Leslie.
Certified publication, so. Yes, so sorry I had forgotten about that, but I had two RFPs going out at the same time and they were both published in both locations.
Oh, great.
Just not the New York Times.
Ah, there we go.
That's that, I'm putting whatever you want in it, I just, I don't think we should, need to be surprised when we get a very boiled down reply that may not address everything that's actually in the RFP.
Right, I mean, I, I don't know if people will choose to address the two things that we've proposed. I, I would be interested in understanding how this, like, what type of capital investment might change based on the length of the lease term. I think that's a normal negotiation term and it would make sense, um, if it's a five-year versus a ten-year and things that.
This will definitely help whoever makes a proposal think about those things, no doubt. But at the end of the day, it's all gonna come negotiations with whoever makes a proposal.
Right. So I, I looked at the ideas that were proposed and there was one that I also thought might be helpful to have.
Number twelve, is it the fence repairs and maintenance? No, no.
Oh, I was thinking number nine, if we, it was, um, that leaseholder is required to contract directly with the company the city of Rollingwood contracts with
That's right, number nine.
for park maintenance to mow and maintain the field irrigation. One contractor allows for better su- oversight of the fields and irrigation. And I suppose, I would, I would wonder if we, when, I remember when, um, I think, uh, Will Tietten, one of the comments he made was just that it would be helpful if the city of Rollingwood would identify what, what they're wanting to manage versus what they're holding, hoping that the leaseholder is gonna manage. And I don't know that I have a clear answer to that right now, I'd like to see proposals. Um, but I do think the, the suggestion that if we are able to get one contractor kind of overseeing all of the upper fields, we, we probably have a better chance of having a better overall maintenance plan that's more regularly attended to. Um, than what we've had over the last five years, which has really changed based on who's been, well, you know, which volunteers are kind of cycling in and out and who's been on the parks commission, so. I don't, I don't, I know that some of the members of the parks commission have come to this and for the first time and are making comments that I feel like I've already heard four times over the last five years of just the reality of the cyclical nature. So I, I do think having, um, a contractor, like one contractor could be one way that's overseeing a lot of those maintenance parts is one way that we could maybe get some more consistency regardless of who's on parks commission and who's, uh, who's running the little league or girl softball, whoever the leaseholder ends up being, that would kind of provide that. So I don't know how that goes in an RFP, but, or if that's a negotiation later, to say we want one contractor.
I think it's just a negotiation later.
I feel like that the park commission has really good ideas and they've worked hard and put together a lot of helpful things that will help us
Mm-hmm.
when we start negotiating the contract, um, I appreciate all of their work on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know that it changes the RFP that we put out, but I do think it will help us as we figure out how to.
I agree, I agree. I agree with you on the whole of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't change the RFP, it just helps with negotiating a contract.
So with that, I will, uh, make a motion, if that's okay. Okay.
Please.
Um, I move to, uh, adopt a process, or I move to, uh, is it adopt the process for the RFP?
I don't know what you're try, it depends on what you're trying to accomplish.
The, number nineteen, um, I'm trying to, uh, oh, I remove, I, I make a motion to, um, adopt the process for the request for proposal for the operation, maintenance, and ground lease of the city of Rollingwood athletic facilities with the draft, uh, RFP document and also with the added proposed amended amendments to the Rollingwood field lease RFP. Uh, number seven and number eight proposed by Patillo Hundley, council members.
Can I offer one, um, one clarification?
Yes.
Maybe to update, there, there are dates in the draft that are out, out of date.
Oh, yes, and updated, uh, dates, uh, as needed by the city administrator.
And do we need to authorize the city administrator to reissue the RFP, or is that adopting the, oh, great, thank you.
Next.
I second your motion.
Motion from Wendy, a second from Amy, discussion council? All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, council. Discussion, possible action to direct city administrator to issue a request for proposals for professional services to perform a study of the planning, development, and building fees for the city of Rollingwood.
Council, as I mentioned earlier, um, there's concern now, um, we've got this professional zoning review, um, to a level that I feel like we've not had in the past, um, we've got Carrie as permanent staff, she's doing a thing up job. And then our drainage review, and so, um, we are concerned that possibly our fees are not covering our expenses and asking, um, I would ask if there is a motion to do this, rather than issue, I would like to develop because I would like to bring the RFP back for your approval before it's, it's issued.
So wait, is that the one we just voted on?
Uh, this is the RFP for, um, our.
To perform a study of the planning, development, and billing fees.
Ca- like the fees for development in the neighborhood, like the.
Sorry, we discussed this briefly earlier, that, uh, with the new processes that we've adopted, uh, in large part through necessity.
I wasn't, but that's not what the question is, my question is, I asked if we were gonna, if we needed, on the last one, I asked if we needed to authorize the city administrator to issue the RFP.
Oh, sorry, right.
And I don't know if we can.
So on nineteen.
Yeah, so we don't have that on here, can we, can we also?
I think that's part of the, um, the process.
The, is that part of the process, okay, so clarifying, that's part of the process, okay, great, okay, moving on, that's fair.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so for clarity and context, we discussed earlier that one of the concerns that we have right now is we are not cap, recapturing uh, the entirety of the city's costs in the building and, um, permitting process for, uh, during, uh, planning, development, and building. Uh, and we have discussed this, uh, gosh, since I was sitting in your seats, uh, for years upon years. And, uh, what the request is, uh, in front of you today, or the decision in front of you now is whether or not council, uh, is inclined to take up a, an actual professional audit of, of the services and costs uh, so that we can be assured that our pricing scheme, uh, aligns, uh, with the actual cost being incurred by the city.
Yes. Sounds good.
You want a motion?
We got, it would do it.
Do, do we need a motion, or this is just an organ?
Well, for an RFP, so for, for.
I'm gonna bring it back, you know.
Well, yeah, but she says you're developing the RFP, this is not.
Okay, I see. Got it.
I'm gonna bring it back to you all.
Got it.
Yeah, but why, this goes back to what city attorney said earlier on the RFP. We just, let's just get the thing out there so it allows people to respond, so we don't waste another thirty days or sixty days going through drafting an RFP that really doesn't matter, cause it's just asking people for proposals, it's like, we're just.
I agree.
So I can appreciate, I appreciate that desire for efficiency very much. But I just want us to be cognizant of the pressures that our city administrator feels from members in our community who maybe are not as attuned to the goings-on in the city as the council is and, uh, have a propensity for crying foul when, um. and uh have a propensity for crying foul when um our city administrator takes that upon herself uh what many of us would might consider the scope of her daily duties that she was hired to undertake. I think what we're talking about here is a situation where a very competent city administrator is asking you uh to make sure her backside is covered uh when uh these citizens come in and perhaps don't fully appreciate the process.
I appreciate that, and can I request a a clarification, is it, is there something about this type of professional service that requires an RFP versus?
Um, no, I think this falls within it, within, I actually think this falls within the exception of the requirement, first of all, you're not gonna be spending more than fifty thousand dollars, I assume, so it's not even required to go out for bid.
I know.
And even if it was, I think it's probably a professional service that would be accepted from the professional bidding requirement, so I mean, if y'all just want to, have I ever told y'all what I think a successful council meeting is?
A short one?
Where you don't have to speak.
We don't have to talk.
Where I don't have to speak, I spoke way too much to them.
Oh, you're just getting started.
Right.
So it, but in that context, but in that context, I think for, you know, I hate saying this to your point, but to Buck's point, um it would be appropriate for you just to authorize her to go out for an RFP, she doesn't have to bring that back to you, she's gonna be bring back to you a contract eventually that's gonna have to be initiated and signed. Well, for, well.
Y'all will be able to rank the proposals even and we would, we would, just as the other met, the other RFPs we've done.
Do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then bring them in for an interview and then you select the one that you would like to negotiate with.
So yes, if you wanna just vote to authorize her to do that now, she can do that, you'll see the final.
Yeah, but the reality is, is most of the people that are complaining aren't the ones building new houses, so why do they care what the fees are? Just out of curiosity.
That's fair.
I'm pretty fed up with all this, to tell you the truth, so.
True.
Oh, I'm fed up with this, oops, alright.
Uh, I I just don't underst- I mean, I just I'm done just trying to appease everybody because they don't understand, it's the same process every time that we're trying to do.
True.
If it's the same for the park, it's gonna be the same for this, why should we start making special exceptions for everything, and I get it, trust me, I love Amber, so I wanna keep people from breathing down our neck, but it's just really, really frustrating to me uh on so many levels.
I will just issue it if you are good with that. Have full confidence in your RFP ability and good RFP.
I. Okay. Well, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna move to direct the city administrator to issue an RFP for professional services to perform a study of the planning, development and building fees for the city of Rollingwood.
I second. We have a motion from Amy and a second from Buck, uh discussion council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you council. Twenty-one, discussion of possible action to direct the city administrator to issue yet another uh request for qualifications uh for professional services to perform a comprehensive plan uh for the city of Rollingwood. Uh, this is an item that um was born out of uh planning and zoning and uh Amber actually had a discussion there, so rather than try to uh play the telephone game, I'll 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 let you hear it directly from the source.
Sure, it was related to um the amendment to the min- the minutes earlier, so um Sarah had brought the item to planning and zoning to determine uh whether um we wanted to allow the construction of a duplex unit from the beginning rather than right now we prohibit it being created after the fact, so um planning and zoning was just discussing this and said, we really wish we had a vision, what what do we want Rollingwood to look like? Do do they want accessory buildings, um more than one, you know, they kind of feel like they don't have any guidance and so um suggested that they might want a comprehensive plan, uh which is something most communities have and so um they asked that I present that to council.
I have a map.
So, uh council requires law to have a comprehensive plan?
Um, no, but if you do have a comprehensive plan, your zoning has to be in compliance with it.
So.
It.
A lot thick.
Does the planning and zoning commission know this?
In in truth, council, this is largely but wh- what we have been moving towards slowly uh over the course of a number of years. Uh, we've seen the adoption of a master plan for the park, uh we've seen now, we had a presentation today on an infrastructure improvement plan. These are, as as I think our city administrator correctly pointed out, uh these are mid and long-term concepts that most communities that tend to exist uh beyond an HOA or long-term and mid mid and long-term strategies, uh have these in place. For various reasons, our community has not. So what we have is a planning and zoning uh board who has recognized that they, this is lacking and are we motivated as a community now to undertake it, uh to remedy this? This would play into something.
Let's just be clear, this is just a request for proposals, correct?
Very, very clear.
Okay.
And largely what this actually goes to uh.
Which, no, I appreciate everything you're saying, but I just want it to be clear that this isn't like we're deciding on anything.
Our previous, no, previous mayor, uh Rox Roxanne uh was a big fan of of asking what do we want our city to look like? I I don't know how many times uh uh I heard that from Roxanne, it's a valid question. And the question, I guess now, is do you wanna answer? And the the way any number of other communities historically have answered this is through some layer of uh or some measure of planning.
I move to direct the city administrator to issue an RQ for professional services to perform a compen- comprehensive plan in the city of Rollingwood.
I second.
We have a motion from Gavin, a second from, I got a couple of people there.
I think we spoke over each other, ladies first.
I'm making deciding motions.
Ladies first, Sarah, uh second for Sarah, uh discussion council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you council. And let Jordan know he's got some he's got some business coming down the pipe.
Yeah, it's gonna be a project.
Yep. Twenty-two, discussion possible action on a recommendation from the utility commission to issue a request for proposals for the selection of a utility rate consultant.
And this is coming from the utility commission, um they would like to look at their winter averaging procedures and a base rate for wastewater rates.
Possibility of a base rate.
It's possibility.
And would you mind providing context, we've discussed it before on on the dais, the context of a base rate, why that's potentially important?
Well, there's what they were wanting to look at is just the overall way that the wastewater rates are billed altogether. And and the reason for the RFP is that we had three proposals, if you will, that were looked at at the last utility commission, but because there was no base documents sent out to everybody, they covered totally different things and so you, it was like comparing apples to oranges and so you couldn't really assess what services were being provided. So that's why they asked to have something sent out so we can actually evaluate options on the same basis. And on the wastewater rates, right now we have a base rate for water service and then a usage rate that's charged in addition based on how much water is used. On the sewer, we do not have a base rate, we, when we first put the sewer in, we had a huge base rate um and now that's been absorbed by the taxes and so now we have no base rate, so when we have a home that's under construction and they don't have any wastewater usage, we've got a lot of properties that are not paying anything for sewer. And although they could not be constructing the home that they're building if the sewer system was not there and we still have to maintain and operate it, but because we don't have a base rate for sewer system, um it's based totally on usage. We've got some inconsistencies in how our wastewater expenses are being billed, so that was one of the things, we were looking at having a base rate similar to what we have on the water so that it covers at least a portion of the fixed costs and then the um the usage rate, the winter averaging that we use would be based um to cover the actual cost of treatment for what goes down the sewer, which is variable based on how much water you're using.
So the utility rate consultant RFP would just be for wastewater utility rate consulting?
Correct.
That's and we just, just evaluated the water and made changes to that not long ago, so.
Right, and we still have the attorneys that we've authorized in there to work with to start evaluating our
The.
challenge to our water rates, so it seems.
That's right.
Well, that's different rates, that's the rates to the city lost and as opposed to the rates that we're charging the.
The citizens.
The citizens.
Right, but it seems like it would be counterproductive to be both spending money on trying to challenge our water rates and then also adjusting our water rates at the same time because we're trying to potentially get our water rates lowered. So um at that point in time, having a utility water rate consultant, it would make sense, so I just wanted to clarify that it's for the wastewater utility rates. Great.
Do we have a motion? Action, council?
We already had one. I don't think we have a motion.
Oh, we're on discussion now, perfect, sorry.
Right, I thought we had one, I was.
Do we have, do you have a motion?
Another motion, second?
No motion, honestly.
Okay, we're doing so many, we're in traffic. So I move that we direct the city administrator to send out a request for proposal for selection of a utility rate consultant to evaluate our wastewater billing rates.
Second.
A motion from Sarah and a second from Wendy, my discussion council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, if we could do one additional thing and suggest that when that RFP is developed uh utility commission also creates an internal matrix so that when those responses or proposals come back, they have a a a matrix to allow them to to compare and contrast the the proposals, which I'm sure will be plentiful. Thanks, council, twenty-three, discussion possible action on a recommendation from the park commission to terminate the agreement with plant-driven design for the butterfly garden. For context, that is um that contract is, gosh, almost a year, nine months old?
March.
March, um there was a stipulation in the contract uh calling for work to be undertaken within six weeks, I believe it was.
Ten days.
Ten days, apologies, even shorter, uh that never happened. So park commission uh has reviewed this and now the recommendation has come back to um terminate the contract.
I move to uh take action to terminate the agreement with plant-driven design for the butterfly garden project.
Sorry, second.
Motion from Wendy and a second from Buck, uh discussion council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you council. Discussion possible action on a request to amend uh policy direction in regard to cost of living adjustment eligibility to include employees hired within ninety days prior to or after September thirtieth. Uh, we, we budgeted for uh cost of living adjustment for all employees on our payroll, um.
Excluding me.
Excluding the city administrator, so we do have these monies in the budget, it's a I'm sure Amber has the exact dollar amount, but it's in the ballpark of about ten thousand dollars.
Right, it's the ten thousand dollar dot delta.
Yeah, um so if I could be so bold as to offer a couple of couple of points on this, I certainly understand and appreciate the the thought process that that council undertook uh last month uh when they made this decision. But I, what we have immedi- what we did immediately see uh was a little bit of a, little bit of a hit to morale with regards to uh the the small number of folks that were excluded. Uh, and then, you know, if if you're to look uh at what a cost of living adjustment actually is uh it's obviously a forward-looking aspect, it's a projection on uh an increase in that cost of living uh over a given period of time, let's say in this year, uh or in this case, a our fiscal year. A very important thing to note, and I understand where the, again, where the confer- uh the conversation went last month uh was that folks should have realized what they were negotiating, uh when they took the pri- uh the salary that they took. But I just want us to be clear that we started two new officers at the same pay rate as we would have started two new officers in two thousand eighteen. If those two new officers had come on in two thousand eighteen, they would have received a three percent cost of living adjustment under our current budget. What you've actually done unintentionally, I'm sure, is actually giving these two new hires a three percent reduction effectively in their, in their salaries. I know that wasn't the intent, uh considering that that is the unintended consequence uh and considering the hit to morale, um when you consider the amount that we're talking about and the practical effects of a COLA, uh it's my sincere hope that uh council would be willing to revisit this portion of the conversation.
I think we wanna keep our employees, we wanna keep morale, um I don't think that there should be disparity in pay and uh we did budget for it, so um I, that's where I'm standing on it, I appreciate you bringing it back and um letting us know. Uh, it's important to me that we're not hitting morale with our employees and that we're valuing them and showing them that we care and I think that this is an important thing to consider and and I'm all for it, that's where I stand.
Um, I feel similarly, I think every year when we get to the COLA there's a lot of discussion around it and I'm always kind of of the opinion generally of like, we give everybody the same COLA, we just give it, um it seems like every year there's some sort of extra either it's performance-based or there is this ninety days thing and I I will say that I am not an HR expert, so um maybe there's good reasons for that, but in my mind it seems more reasonable to do, just everybody gets the same thing, so I'm also of that same opinion, um I I also will defer to people who manage budgets and sometimes there are difficult choices to make, so the people who understand HR and setting salaries a little bit better than me, um and so that's where I'm at.
I know it was really, and no offense to Amber, but to treat Amber's contract negotiation separately from the COLA, I think it's a separate process, we have a separate conversation about it. That was really more my intent with that, was to address that issue.
And I'm, I mean, y'all have been really good to me, very good to me and I'm happy to not take the three percent and we keep that conversation separate and hope that my employees, that we worked really hard to get here, um to give that to them.
To that point, we do have fantastic staff, we have fantastic officers. We were able to bring them to our community, the challenge in front of us now is retaining them in our community.
How do we prevent this in the future, so if we do hire people people during budget season, I think that's like more the issue is is that you're hiring people based on last year's budget
You bet.
And implement a new budget, so there's always gonna be that issue, right?
And and I.
So we just need to have foresight next time to make sure we address that during budget.
Agree with you wholeheartedly, yeah.
So we shouldn't have really hired them at, we should have almost hired them at a higher.
We should have cons- we should have considered the COLA.
Considering, yeah.
That's right.
That's the, that's the real issue, right?
What I, what I would say there, that's why I I'm I'm confident that this was an unintended, uh an oversight and unintended consequence.
Oh, I'm new to the shows. It was totally.
Absolutely, yeah, you're, I've I've heard that.
My peers, I can't.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, uh but what I, what I would say i- in 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 counsel's defense and in uh throughout the entire budget process. Right, all of these key hires were made before we had had a discussion on COLA. So it's kind of difficult for us. Uh one, one person might argue that uh it would have been the cart in front of the horse to discuss adding. Adding a a COLA to a consideration of a of a salary ahead of time. Um so I I I will say that, but um. I I am, I do firmly believe that this is a a um, it is, it's the, it's it's the right move. It's the smart move to make.
So I would move to amend the policy direction in regard to cost of living adjustment eligibility to include. Employees hired within ninety days prior to or after September thirtieth twenty nineteen to reflect that all employees other than April Lewis. Would receive the same COLA.
Second.
So we have a motion from Amy and a second from Wendy. Uh do we have discussion counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed? Thank you counsel.
Thank you.
Twenty-five. Discussion and possible action on an ordinance amending the city's code of ordinances, section two twelve point oh six, to prohibit the operation of motor assisted scooters in the city. Providing for a penalty of up to five hundred per day for a violation of this ordinance, providing for severability and an effective date. Charlie, you've brought us a pretty thoughtful uh draft of an ordinance, or I guess actually an ordinance that is ready to be adopted if counsel so chooses. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Counsel, um we've had a couple of discussions about this presuming uh and assuming that you have had an opportunity to uh take this in. Do we have any action?
Um I have a few questions, but we can make a motion first for discussion. I could do that.
It might help expedite things. We're on a twenty minute budget, guys.
Okay, um I move to amend the city's code of ordinances, section twelve point oh six, to prohibit the operation of motor assisted scooters in the city. Providing for a penalty of up to five hundred per day for a violation of this ordinance, providing for severe ability and an effective date.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion counsel?
Um I just wanted clarification for those people in the neighborhood who have purchased motorized scooters for their children, who already own them. Is this affecting those recreational vehicles?
Yes. It is.
They're not grandfathered.
No.
Just wanted to have it on there for clarification purposes.
And and we've had no public input on this at all.
On this ordinance?
On this ordinance. And with this, because this is the first we've seen anything in front of us.
Well.
First, first that we've had anything that says we were proposing to ban them and and we've not had any public input.
Well, we've had this or something very similar on our agenda and, gosh.
On scooters?
At le- least three times and it was in a, it was in a lead up conversation, uh multiple conversations that we've had as, on this dais, uh in a lead up to um ACL.
We talked about bikes.
How bikes are appropriate and.
It was dock, it was scooters, dock, it was dockless scooters uh and bikes was was the crux of the discussion. Um if I, if I remember correctly, but.
I don't remember. It's talking about the scooters.
The conversation was that because our city is full of hills, but it's not, the topography doesn't lend it to being a safe environment for scooters. We talked about how the scooters, when they come into the city, they cut the speed down, um and so sometimes people will stop using them because they go too slow. Talked about how when they go down a hill, they could get hurt, but that bikes were the preferred um method of that sort of transportation because our city would. Um benefit from having a motorized bike help you up a hill because we have such big hills where the scooters would be more dangerous, but. If I could recap that correctly, all the discussion.
I've heard all those things.
Yes, the this, I'm confident.
I thought the whole point of this was to enable Uber to come in and set up an ability to to rent out their.
The bikes.
The bikes.
That's the.
That's the next item.
That's the next. So.
Does this either one?
I would say now seeing the ordinance that um. I don't know how many people, I had the same question of, I wonder how many people in the city already own their own motor assisted scooter and that it might be. There might be some that are safer than the ones you can rent potentially because the rentable ones are just not as safe for riding on hills. But I know that there are some that are designed for other terrain that people purchase, so um. Having realized that, I'm, I I would wonder if one more public hearing on the ordinance itself would be prudent. Just to make sure that, I I know that last time when we had the discussion of pocket bikes, just remembering how full it was when we had the discussion of pocket bikes.
That was a hotter topic than uh whether or not we were going to implement a building moratorium.
It wasn't. It's, it really, the pocket bikes are, were a hot topic.
Well, we had the same issue when we were talking about the golf carts, too.
Right, yeah.
And and we had hearings.
So I would say I really, I really, I I like the the ordinance that we now have in place. I'd like to make sure that it doesn't have unintended consequences of like. If we have some adults right now who are using electric scooters as their form of um transportation to get to their office places instead of. And they've, they've bought something that might be an exception here or if we have a street that's accepted or something, um so.
Isn't that a conversation we had, Charlie, where we could say on these specific streets, they're not allowed, like on Rollingwood Drive?
Yes, you could do that.
Timberline?
Yes, you could.
But that they could be allowed on some streets, so that, I think that would be worth having a public hearing on because there may be somebody who. Says I live on a flat street that connects to a flat street and I use it to get to work, so.
I think we should bring it back to the next city council meeting.
Yeah, I think it's a well written ordinance.
And do a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, soon.
Okay.
I personally don't use them, but I know a lot of people in the neighborhood do.
I don't like them. I've never been on one, but I'm probably not gonna live.
But there's also.
If y'all see one, Gavin, will you please take a picture?
You see your eyes on, you better call anyone. It's just any minute now, I'm going down.
Now, is there, there's also, I think, a situation where kids have gone into the city of Austin, maybe kids from this neighborhood that I've seen. And they've taken a credit card of their parents and they've rented a scooter and ridden it home.
Allegedly.
Allegedly.
I I haven't heard of this as well.
I I actually, I know, uh the related person and I've seen them do it. Um so is, should there be some sort of um. I, we're saying we'll take it and it's a five hundred dollar offense. Does a kid get the five hundred dollar ticket?
Yeah.
Me, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Watch your credit cards.
Actually, so, so we're as clear that the kid gets the ticket and then he, he gets to go with his mom or dad down to the municipal court. And usually plea out.
He's here.
And I, I understand, I understand that our uh, our new chief is uh, he's particularly hard on the uh. On the.
Motor assisted scooter driver?
On youth, on youth violators.
You, you get, get onto the youth, huh?
I feel your stance to have.
So we're in agreement and we'll, we'll set this up for a public hearing and and additional discussion next month.
Correct.
Okay, thank you counsel. Twenty-six. Discussion possible action on. An ordinance adopting a new article of the city's code of ordinances by adding chapter twelve, traffic and vehicles. Article twelve point oh eight, dockless vehicles, electric bicycles and bicycles equipped with GPS. Providing for the regulation of dockless vehicles, electric bicycles and bicycles equipped with GPS in the city. Providing for the permit requirements for dockless vehicles, electric bicycles and bicycles equipped with GPS. Providing for a penalty up to five hundred dollars per day for a violation of this ordinance and providing for severability and an effective date.
It seems to me that this ought to be up for public hearing at the same time we talk about the scooters.
I agree.
I'll ask the same question on this. If we're allowing this, are children allowed to rent these?
Uh I'll defer to the chief, but I, and I'm not gonna, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna defer to the chief right now because I don't wanna put the poor guy on the spot. But they're gonna have to comply with the rules of the road. Um so I'm assuming um that if it's a motorized vehicle that they may, I don't, they may have to be sixteen or older.
They're maybe stay.
I don't know the answers to those questions um off the top of my head.
Okay.
But they've gotta comply with all traffic laws, so whatever those may happen to be.
And that would need to be in our ordinance? It would just be?
No, yeah, no, that's, that doesn't have to be in the ordinance.
Should we put it in the ordinance?
Uh no, no.
This is definitely pocket bikes two point oh.
Yeah, these are just, yeah, these are just our, our regulations. They'll, they'll still have to comply with state law. I wouldn't, I'm, I'm not a fan of putting state law into our regulations because once you start putting one, then.
Right.
Well, and then when the state law changes and our ordinance is not up to date, then you have to change our ordinance too.
Yeah, then then. But I, I, I just don't know that the law's on.
Okay.
Um I don't, I don't think you need a driver's license, so I mean, maybe they don't. I guess it just depends on the displacement of the engine.
Chief, could you find an answer for us for the public hearing?
I I can research that. If they, obviously if they meet the definition of a bicycle, then it's, you know, it's gonna be something that the child would use.
Right, I I just don't know what that is because these are gonna have a, a motor on it. I just don't know, you know, what the displacement requirements are for requiring.
If they have a cylinder.
What makes it a bicycle? What makes it a motorcycle, right, chief? That's really what it comes down to.
Correct. It's just, just the, the definition, the legal definition.
Yeah.
On the dockless vehicle permit application, Charlie, could you take a look at it? I, I guess one question I have is. The ordinance talks about the police chief being the one that is gonna manage these permits, but then the permit application goes to the city administrator?
Okay, well, yeah, we'll double check, make sure there's, there's consistency there.
And then also on that permit application, the second line says a fee shall not be required for an application for a dockless vehicle permit, application permit. And I, I wasn't sure if that was meaning like, it's, there's not a fee to apply, but then if it's approved, do you have to get one or?
Yeah, that's the intent and of course you can, you can require a, a fee. This is the, you know, it's, all, it really is a good idea for y'all to, if you haven't had a chance opportunity to review this, to. To sit down and review it, because these are all policy issues and questions that y'all need to address.
Right. Okay.
Well, and it, is there like state code that says that it has to go to the chief of police for the permit?
No, no, no.
Because none of our permits now go through the police department, so.
No, if if it, if y'all believe the permit process should go through the city administrator rather than the police department, I, I.
Just kidding. I just.
Did she punch me?
I pointed it out.
Oh, okay, thought she was gonna punch me.
I mean.
Yeah, it seems like it could go through my permit now as like something that they, you know, could go in and it's like an automated system and carries over all of the permitting. I don't, yeah, I don't expect a million of these coming through.
Yeah, there's not gonna be a, a lot.
True.
There's only a few companies that.
That's right.
Operate this.
I, yeah, I think I would still maybe just direct it to come in here first and.
City administrator?
City administrator, yeah, and then in consultation, making sure that you're managing and knowing how many are coming in, what would be safe and everything, but.
So you're not managing a permit process?
Right.
And having to make sure that you're issuing permits. I just don't think that. I think we should keep that in the administrative functions probably.
Got it.
Unless there's some state.
Yeah, if there's some reason, then.
Or unless you were wanting to be issued.
Do you like to be permitted?
I'll, I'll defer to the city administrator. Um you know, if there's not a background check or things like that, I typically I would. See my involvement, it may be a aspect.
So uh maybe on this one, or is a consensus of having a public hearing on both items? Okay.
Yeah. Twenty-seven. Standing agenda item, update, discussion, possible action regarding the B cave improvement project Tech Dot has committed to co-sponsoring the city. Rollingwood will address lower water, uh low water crossing flooding issues, expand five lanes with shoulders and sidewalks throughout Rollingwood's portion of B cave road. Um a large part of the discussion that we're hoping to have on next steps for with Tech Dot uh. I- is actually gonna be in this K freeze, uh coming out of that, our K freeze report, uh being able to demonstrate uh and. A third party recognized need uh for specific improvements and be able to even per uh potentially offer. Some level of solution, what that might look like. Uh so we've just received this. Uh we'll work with K freeze to get uh this being the IIP. Right. Uh we'll work with K freeze, uh ideally to pull specifically out that B caves uh conversation so that we can then. Bring that in very clear terms uh to Tech Dot. Ideally, kind of refocus that conversation specifically on that need and then make sure that that's part of the broader need with regards to sidewalks. And bike lanes and um general safety concerns throughout B cave road.
Um my only comment too is that I was just in a TAC meeting today and the RT, the um. The process for us getting the, making sure that the B caves are improvement is in the tempo twenty forty-five plan is. That window is about to start opening and it'll be about two months and so I think this would be an important time to make sure we're getting something. Clearly identified, so I could circle back with Commissioner Doherty's office as well this week.
Perfect.
Because I know that he's indicated that he'll make sure that he's monitoring what's happening with it and providing support.
Perfect, so a big, to, to also clarify, uh in, in the same vein, uh we did have a meeting with some folks from uh Campo earlier, earlier this week. To sum up, the big takeaway is, uh we wanted to make it abundantly clear that the city of Rollingwood. Is unquestionably opposed to um. Like counterflow traffic. Uh we think that it would be exceptionally detrimental to what we are trying to achieve as a city, which is. Uh facilitate ease uh of, of folks getting in and out of and taking advantage of our commercial district. We're worried, uh as uh our local businesses have, uh some of our local businesses that are aware of this have also expressed similar concerns. Uh that this plan uh to uh expeditiously move people through our commercial district. Uh would have a detrimental impact on commerce in our city. We've expressed that uh in pretty meaningful terms to Campo. Uh I trust that they received our message. And then I am hopeful that they were actually, uh they're gonna be responsive and true to the message that they gave back to us, which is that our voice will be heard. And and make sure that our, our comments and concerns will make it into their draft. So, uh just to bring you up to speed, that's, that's where we are um with Campo.
Thank you for having that meeting, Amy and Mike and Amber. Appreciate that.
I feel pretty good about it. The folks at Campo, uh as I say, they left a, they left a good impression. I have no reason to believe and I trust that they will not disappoint us. Uh in what they, uh the message they left us with. Anything else to add on twenty-seven? Twenty-eight. Uh update, discussion, possible action, pass a resolution, request a meeting with to provide information or statement of position. Uh of the city to and or to request information or analysis from relevant state and local officials in connection with the proposed South Mopec expansion. Amy, if you have anything, you have almost five minutes.
We are still working on this, on the transitioning the resolution into a letter.
Thank you, good. I'm happy to help uh in any regards I can in that.
Thank you.
Very short.
Uh you're fantastic, thank you very much. Uh for the record, items uh listed in twenty-nine through thirty-seven are available for the public. Uh if anybody is interested in reviewing those. Uh anybody inclined to adjourn the meeting?
Need to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
At nine fifty-five?
Jackpot.
Man?
Yep, we're right on target. Uh Buck, Wendy, Amy, there's no discussion on adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.